We will call the meeting to order. And will the secretary please take the role?
Sure. Trustee Bloom, here. Trustee Jack Orthing, here. Trustee Fairfax is here. Trustee Foss.
Here.
Trustee Ben Bulu.
Here.
Trustee Rogers.
Here.
And trustee fruit.
Here.
They're all here in the building.
Next item is the approval of our minutes. We have minutes for our July 23 meeting. Are there any, anyone notice any errors or things that need clarification? I do not see anything. If there are no changes, is there a motion to approve the minutes from July 23rd? Moved by Maya. Is there a second by Virginia? Any further discussion? Hearing none, if those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. They are approved. Public comments. No one was here to sign in. I received nothing via email nor via the public, the form on the website. So we will move on then to trustee comments and calendar. September 11th, which is in two weeks, is the Electoral Official's barbecue. Suzie was kind of through another reminder. I thought I told them earlier, but I guess I did not fill out the form.
Actually, so that was just a general thing. So hats off to you guys. The only, there was only one person who hasn't responded.
Why you didn't meet Suzie?
I assumed she was talking about me.
And Jan, Jan did say we're doing the best of all the public guys.
That's right.
Hats off to you guys.
So excellent effort.
Yes, me too, right?
And just trustee, I want to say that I will not be in the search committee meeting on Friday.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you for that heads up. Tuesday, the 24th, is our next regular board meeting. Does that work for everyone? Anyone have any conflicts that we should possibly discuss? A change in thing? Since we're all here, let's just, let's just take a look right now to re- verify.
What was the date again?
The 24th of September. Just wanted to make sure no one accidentally booked a vacation.
We should mention this, members, please take.
Oh.
I'm proud to make.
94th, please take.
Ooh.
What did you say?
Take. My mom is not going to be very happy to meet you one day.
So it looks good for everyone still?
Yeah.
Okay, good. And then the ILA conference in Peoria. If anyone that's interested in going, let Suzie and Lee know so we can do the registration. I'm, I'm trying to figure out a way to go. But it is, you know, early voting starts like three days afterwards, so I may not.
There's not a whole lot of virtual content either.
No, it's Thursday, October 10th is like the trustee day. And I'm just looking right now, they have a whole schedule here, but everything is in person.
Okay.
So it's part of it though.
Do you know Michael is going to be there though? Michael Treats?
Yeah.
Michael Treats is going to be there. And what's the parks been at though?
The Park City.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. She is delightful.
And now I want to play hooky and take Tom. Okay.
I'm going for Wednesday for my day job and I'm trying to make it happen for Thursday through my day job, but I might reach out if it doesn't work out because I'd like to stay for Thursday, but we'll see.
Okay. All right, any trustee comments? All right, then we'll move into our interim director's report.
Um, we have been busy, you know, Lee has been serving us the staff leadership liaison for the Koya search and has been busy with that. And we have been doing a lot of meetings with Koya. The leadership team, they met with Lee and I and the management team. So that's been good. And then I can kind of jump down and talk, talk a little bit about the strategic priorities report, which kind of highlights what staff has been doing. And under engagement, I want to highlight the middle and high school services. While the summertime isn't as busy for the teens, they do make a really concerted effort to kind of try different strategies to engage teens, which are a hard group to engage. And they did kind of some Dungeons and Dragons and gaming sessions at Maze. And they also have been doing a lot of activities outside in the park, trying to engage the kids, you know, doing kind of fun activities. And there's some pictures there of that under Barney. We wanted to highlight the work of digital learning specialist Amelia Pargas. She's a hero to many patrons and staff. Her patience and her analytical approach to technology make her a really great teacher. And as somebody personally who has a background in helping, you know, doing tech, tech support for seven years in my entire career, it's a very, it's like one of the most impactful interactions you'll have because people are incredibly grateful, but it also can require a lot of patience. And so she works really closely, does a lot of our one-on-ones and we just wanted to kind of highlight her work. And then in anti-racism and equity, we had a library assistant who Lou Powers, who worked at the Harvard University Library as an equity, diversity, inclusion, belonging and anti-racism, that's a mouthful, intern in the preservation services department. So we kind of granted her a leave so that she could do this internship program at Harvard this summer. Through this experience, she learned a great deal about applying anti-racism strategies to the preservation and archiving materials and how systems of oppression have affected and continue to affect the work of information professionals. So we were really excited to be able, that she was offered this opportunity to develop her career. And we're thrilled that she came back, you know, she came back after that experience. And she shared the Zoom link for her final presentation with several of our staff members. So it was kind of a really.
That's wonderful.
Really great thing that we were able to offer.
Would it be possible, or did I miss the email, could we see?
The presentation, yeah. Yeah, we'd be happy to do that.
Thank you. Were there any big takeaways that she brought back?
Yeah, I think it was kind of, kind of informing some of the, helping inform some of the work for special collections about some of these differences.
Don't miss anything. We could talk a little bit more.
Yeah, she's actually, Loua first came with a practicum to special collections, which is how she learned about the public library. And so she was fantastic and we were thrilled that she got hired on. So yes, and special collections does offer opportunities for like other staff who have our Google background to kind of come in and do some of that work. So she's fantastic, we're very proud of her.
Awesome.
That's wonderful. I think, yeah, I think when a lot of people think of like the archive stuff, I think it can very, I would say most of the public could very easily not appreciate how that access to history is very, could be very impactful to, you know, people who have been systematically oppressed and denied access to, you know, their own cultural heritage. And I think that that's a, I'm just glad, I'm just glad that you, we were able to do that, but also that she came back and hopefully we'll be able to benefit from, from her and those practices back.
Mom, do you have a moment?
All right, so under engagement, Adult Services and Special Collections collaborated with a local organization, Arbor West Neighbors, which is a group dedicated to supporting older adults in Oak Park area and gave them a special library tour. They were able to tour the creative studio with librarian Amy Hafmeier. They went to special collections and met with manager and curator Kathleen Spail, our special collections librarian Carrie Bacon and artist Linda Macabano. And then they were able to get an overview of library services from our older adults librarian Ian Goss. So afterwards, they were able to give feedback on kind of what they'd like to see offered in the library and what they appreciate in the library. And so those special collections and adult services said it was just a fantastic tour. Under stewardship, after the setup and cleanup of a very successful Friends Book Fair, the facilities team has been catching up on some regular care and maintenance around the buildings. There was a semi-annual fire sprinkler inspection at Maze. They've been doing some work on the air handler and exhaust fan efficiency upgrade. And they completed work on the server and network portion of our parking garage equipment, supported by the IT team. And then in anti-racism and equity, in honor of disability pride month, Shelley Harris, which is our, she's our early learning librarian, once again led library efforts to celebrate people with disabilities and disability as an identity through a variety of activities and programs. They've done a disability pride display on the idea box. They did themed storytimes, a lot of craft, DIY button making and fidget making sessions and 3D movie screenings. Shelley also presented for teens and adults about autism and ADHD, co-led a hidden disability peace circle for adults and led our second annual disability pride march, which is fantastic. Additionally, other, our collection librarians curated a list of disability pride titles for all ages, accessible through the library catalog.
Got any questions?
I do, I've got a couple of questions. There's a wonderful book that we now have in the library by W. E. B. Du Bois. And it's called Brown Things. It just gets into special collections. Evidently in the 1920, W. E. B. Du Bois did a children's magazine for a couple of years. And there's a new edition that is absolutely fantastic. And I was surprised when I was looking for the soles of black folk. Just kind of surprised me. The, I love, as I was coming up from my car, you've got all those wonderful new signs and everything. And one really great thing is working with people who are having mobility issues and all this stuff. And I'm working with the Shirley Ryan Hospital downtown. And it's just so wonderful to see, we're doing those kinds of things. It was really great. Finally, I'm hoping that the AED monikers and all that have been updated. Because somebody, they, all the, the things that you pull out and somebody's like.
Oh, they have, they need to, yeah, they've gotten all.
That'll help. And I'm really impressed with what Koya is doing for us. And it's just, it's just really nice to see that. Also, I'm just very happy to see that housing persons with disabilities are able to do that. It's just, it's just turning into wonderful. So thank you.
I had a question on Shelley's presentation on autism and ADHD for adults. Are we planning to make that presentation or recording of that presentation accessible on demand?
I would have to check with her to see if it was recorded, the presentation. I think it's depending on how it's given. Yeah, but I can follow up with her on that to see if that was something that is easily, you know, if it was a hybrid program.
Okay. I ask because I have talked to a few people who don't know how to learn about that or access that in their workplace. And this seems like a digestible way for them to learn about their coworkers or the people that they're managing for themselves and maybe resources as well. So if we already had that in existence, we can make it available.
Yeah.
As a resource, that might be something that.
You know, and I think at the bottom when they said more, you know, there seems to be a little demand for this. When they said, she said that more than one participant asked if it could be offered more often. You know, maybe that's what we need to do was kind of build it into more of our regular programming if there's demand. But I will check with her to see if that's something we can get on the website.
Perfect, thank you.
Then we will go into our staff reports. We just kind of covered the strategic priority reports. And there were not any changes in staffing for July. Does anybody have any questions about the strategic priorities? Then we can move into the financial reports. We have our, our summary here as well. Going where we're at as well as going into our various reconciliation reports. Are there any questions?
I've got a couple of questions. Crisis Communications, what is that, is that one item?
That's a firm that the authority has engaged with.
That's just Google term.
And union dues? Is that, is that item? I'm just wondering what.
The union?
Yeah, but why are we paying to union dues from the library budget?
So I believe that those are dues that are being directed from people's paycheck and then we're paying out.
So it's pre-tax?
I already echoed, the echo came first.
I believe that they are pre-tax.
Yeah.
It's probably adoption pre-tax, right?
They are post-tax.
Post-tax, oh.
Post-tax.
Okay.
Thanks. I haven't, I haven't looked into the details, but the operation is post-tax.
It's just to ensure that.
It's in, it's compliance with the CPA. Yeah, yeah, we, we take it directly from that. That's initial on the paycheck.
The what?
The bar system.
Like a bargaining agreement.
Oh. Yes, sorry.
Y'all are out there, just saying one word.
Acronyms. Ted, did you have any other question?
Just, I saw that it was $16,000 for the executive search. That's to Koya, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions related to the various financial statements and reports? Okay. Hearing none, we will move into our resolutions on dispersments, which begins on page 26. And can run through page 56. Are there any questions? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution on dispersments?
So.
Moved by Materima, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Maya. Any further discussion? Hearing none, if those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. It is approved. Okay, we'll move into additional reports. I go.
We did meet. We, goodness, we, we're talking about doing a panel for prospective trustees across all governing bodies. And so that would take place in September. But we have to figure out a lot of things. So that's, I think, what our next steps are. So we're hoping to do it in September before folks need to move on getting signatures and stuff. And we would just really briefly go over like what dates are important, what they can expect. The hope is that it's kind of a panel of representation across all governing bodies so that maybe we can go into breakout groups and talk with people who are interested in our governing body. So it should be good. We just need to schedule it and get to it.
Minor, minor details.
Just that really big, really big important piece, but I think that's about it. And I, I, yeah, there wasn't any other like big, I go things.
Okay. CAG did not meet since our last meeting. Planet Green?
Planet Green did meet. And it's a wonderful organization, but their website is really, really not up to date. I'm hoping that we can have a stream from our group meet with Planet Green or with the trustees so that we can talk more about sustainability. So to invite her would be wonderful. And other than that, they're doing good work. And I think that they're trying to communicate with the community about everything from solar energy to working with electric vehicles and all. And Carrie Crimmins did a good job. But I would like to have a little bit more communication with, particularly with Ms. Jan and with Matt, so.
Thank you, Ted. Friends?
We met on August 12th and they discussed the success of the book fair. I thought I had the final numbers on the book fair in my email, but I do not. So I will, if that's okay, I'll, I'll get it and then I can, I can share the next meeting, all the final numbers. So my apologies about that. Amelia did present the preliminary figures, so they were not final. So maybe that's the reason why she, I, I did ask because I couldn't, I didn't get all the numbers quite accurate. So she said she'd sent it to me. So I think she's just finalizing it. But Russ and Kat presented some great statistics. Oh, actually, no, they're right here. 1,937 sales recorded. And it was 15% up from the previous year. To do so for this year, it was 34K as opposed to 29.5K, which was raised. So that was, that was all good. Kat was taking a look at volunteer surveys and they were also comparing our book sale to other book sales. There's always that tension between the, you know, the book lover buyer and the professional buyer, the scanning, you know, bringing the Amazon of the world and making it so that you have very aggressive clientele who are there not to enjoy the books, but to, to see what's, what's going on on Amazon. But that, that is, that is, that is the bingo. Things are looking good. They're having their Fall Social, they're doing a volunteer pizza party, it's a thank you for everyone. And there was a vote on who should be the volunteer of the year. In the end, they actually chose four volunteers.
There you go.
For context, Matt, do you remember how much was raised by the book sales before we had the main house?
I did think back, I know that there were, in the high school, and I'm trying to, I don't know if this was like grosser than that, but there were definitely multiple years where it was over $40,000 regularly. But that was.
Didn't have to pay that.
Yeah, and that's why I'm saying it's like, I'm not sure if that was grosser than that. But it was, and I think there may have been even years where it was over 50. But it's, you know, there is, there's an advantage to having more time at, at, you know, with dedicated space where nothing else was happening at the high school. On the downside, they charged us for security and everything else. You know, and so there were, there were more costs associated with it. So I don't know what the, you know, if this is habitable in terms of, you know, what was, you know, what actually was able to be kept by the organization comparatively is probably on par, you know? So it's hard to say.
Okay.
But I, I do know that there were years where it was, in the, in definitely many years in the forties, but it's the number that jumps out at me. But again, I don't know if that was before expenses or after.
Maya, did they do any more talking about more than one or separating out the book fairs? I know that was a topic last year.
What do you mean separating out the book fairs? You mean in terms of?
Like genre of books?
Oh, genre.
Yeah, I think at one time it was like do kids and then do adults. And there was talk of, we have too many of X, let's give it its own.
You know, it was one of those things where, you know, that was part of the survey. Of course, I think Kat's trying really hard to kind of pinpoint and figure out. But I think that there's the reality of, there's always going to be someone who's going to be like, well, there weren't any historical romances dealing with genocide at the same time, you know? Or I didn't have enough comic books. And so it's, it's a difficult, it's a difficult thing for them to gauge because they did talk a little bit about like what's really popular, what's really useful, how much, how much staff effort you also want to put into it. And that's staff effort, sorry, volunteer effort. You really want to put into it because somebody has to do the sorting.
Yeah.
So I, I feel like that's where things were, it's always going to be a little bit of like give and take. But that was, that was, that was actually a notable part of the discussion was the genre issue and what are the genres that really sell? And what are the genres that really make it easier and better and more serviceable for people?
Okay.
I would imagine that there has also been years, you know, that various, that different genres are more popular and given years, you know, there might be a year where biographies are, you know, the super hot thing that everyone's trying to get, you know, in other years it's fiction or something else. I think it's, it, that's one of those quirks is it's, I'm sympathetic to it, but it's also, it's, that's also so hard to pin down because you just never know what the trend is going to be, except that there will always be books by Mr. Patterson.
Does staff like the book fair or do just too much work?
You know, I, I think that for me, it was really cool to see that big crowd, you know? I think they did a lot more, more connected to the math. But it is a lot of work, right? You know, and they have a really great volunteer group. But I think on Monday morning, you know, the place was a little wrecked and they didn't have a lot of people show up. So it was kind of us trying to stand on to get the place back to, put the trash back together. But we appreciate the friends and their generosity toward, you know, their programs. And so I think that they feel like it's a worthwhile endeavor it works. And, you know, they, they tweaked a lot of things. They only took donations for like a month. And I think that worked really well. And, you know, got a lot of feedback from pageant services that they, they cleaned that area. There were always people sorting and it was just tidy and neat. And so Kat and Russ run such a, they have quite the operation, you know? I feel like they need like whistles or something. They are just like on, you know? We had like a meeting about pallet stacking one day and I was like, wow. So they do a really good job.
And I also love that they're like making a point to visit other library sales and like getting those policies and doing the comparison. Because I'm, I'm always about like, yeah, Oak Park versus Arlington Heights, you know? And whatnot. But no, I do, I do think that was pretty great is that they have been going to other local library book sales and doing comparisons and how, like what policies do they have in place? How do they deal with the, you know, the Amazon scanner issue, you know? You know, how strict do we want to do? How much enforcement do we want to do that? So that's sort of open issue topics. The joy of the moment.
Oh, yes. All right. With that, we'll go into unfinished business, our executive search process. I'll, I'll give a couple of highlights and then I'll turn it over to Materima, who is chairing our committee. The, the search committee is, just as a refresher, Materima, Chair Suzanne and Ted with the, as a staff leadership representative to, you know, help make sure that we continue to have that, you know, that voice present. And as a reference, also help coordinate our efforts with staff. And, you know, which has been very helpful, I think, and as Suzie and Lee have mentioned, you know, the meetings that have already happened with leadership and management with Koya, having Lee directly in those meetings and those conversations. So I think it's helped facilitate those things happening faster than running through, you know, those communications getting, you know, telephoned between, you know, someone else and, and her and to staff. The, the process timeline, the process timeline is being developed. It is, let Materima speak more to it, but we hopefully will be able to release some version, you know, you know, an internal version for our, you know, consideration as well as how we are presenting it to the public for them. The needs assessment is underway with, we've all have received an email to solicit feedback to a, a sample form, a form from Koya. I hope everyone has taken a chance or will take a chance soon to complete it. And the, the community is going to, you know, we will be, you know, publishing and sharing our process as appropriate with the community. There are obviously things that won't, you know, that will be. privileged conversations as we move through this process, as particularly as we move into reviewing candidates. But we will keep the community informed. I think that is a very clear intent from, that I've heard from everyone, both on the committee and the rest of the board. And we want to make sure that we're hearing from, you know, multiple voices to hear the perspectives of all of these as we move through this process. Madarima, you wanna?
Yeah, so I think Matt covered most of it actually, but I wanted to say thanks to Suzanne who actually volunteered to be the chair of the committee until I wrestled her for it. And I. And 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 I, and I'm really grateful for everybody who's on the committee, including Tricia and Amber from Koya. There are a couple of things that I did, I did want to flesh out a little bit, which is, like Matt said, there, you heard from Suzanne as as well as me about the, about the board survey. And I hope that you will all fill it as soon as possible. But also if you want in addition or instead of the survey to meet with Tricia and our Amber, I think, you know, they're copied on the, on the, on the emails that you've gotten so far. You should feel free to reach out, obviously, if anybody on the committee, any of the, any of us board members on the committee, and Matt's been coming to the meetings, and Christina was at one of the meetings too. I think we would be more than happy to put you directly in touch if you, if you wanted to, but they are, they are copied. So I think the timeline that we're looking for, looking at, sorry, is that the needs. And I, and I do want to say that if I'm getting stuff wrong, I hope that the people on the committee will please step in and correct me. But the, we're currently, as Matt said, in the needs assessment phase. Hopefully, that's going through August and September. They've already met with leadership. There is going to be other conversations. We have our second meeting this Friday. There will be, so in August and September of twenty-four will be the, the phase of needs assessment and the, and the launch of the search. From September to, you know, the duration of the search is when Koya is hoping to do the outreach and candidate cultivation. We, let me just get through the topical stuff first and then I'll add some details in the interviews and references. We're hoping for November to January is when we can wrap that up. There was some talk about the holidays and trying to make sure we accommodate for the holidays when we're figuring out our.
Sorry, meaning like we'd have something in hand through?
Facing. For interviews and references, yes. I mean, I think that, well, it it all sort of depends, like there's a, I will say that they're incredibly organized, right? And the, and the, and the detail that they provided is kind of interesting, but it's all very mutable right now. It's like, it it depends on so many different factors. I just wanted to know what was included in interviews and references.
I think, I think a reference check.
Yes, right, not, but also board interviews potentially in in the, but again, November to January, that's like long. That's like a, we're trying to give like very broad strokes at this point. With the hope that there is an offer that comes in around February of twenty twenty-five. So the broad strokes notwithstanding, there are, of course, you know, there's, they've, they're taking on a lot, Koya's taking on a lot. But the expectation is that the entire board will meet with the slate of final candidates. They were pretty insistent, and I think to their credit, that the confidentiality of, that they're, they're invested in protecting the confidentiality of the candidates so that that information will obviously not be widespread until, you know, about the very last minute. But that, I think Suzanne and Ted and Matt mentioned that we would want the entire board to speak to the final, final candidate, candidates and not, it just not, not just be the search committee.
How do you all, you all agree with that? We felt like based on how much we wanted it to be a full committee last time, that that was, it felt important.
Yeah.
To have you all. When we say final, final, we're talking like last two, three, five.
It hasn't been.
It hasn't been.
Not exactly what. Just estimating, but that's the tier relevance.
Yeah.
So just the tier right before we're making a final.
Right, okay, yes. Though, of course, that could change and, you know, as some of the details get fleshed out and we get further in the process, you know, our, our hope on the search committee is that we'll keep coming back to you with the details and then you will tell us if something seems off or you want something to go, to go differently.
That is, I completely agree with that. I think that, you know, that communication between all of us and the committee is gonna be, is, I think it's something we're all looking for. We want to make sure we're all on the right.
Yeah, we want to make sure that the voices that are not at that table in the smaller committee.
Are being represented.
Right, absolutely. I I think it's fair to say that our, our hope on search committee is to take some of the work, but not the, not the voice, right? So however, however, we want to make sure, however, we want, we make sure that we are communicating.
That is an excellent paraphrase. You should look into literature.
You think, I think you'd like that.
I don't know. I think it's, it's a dead feeling maybe, you know?
I'm not sure about books personally.
I did write down your quote for me. I did.
It's gonna be in a T-shirt soon. Pulling off another T-shirt. Okay, so any questions or feedback or concerns that we could maybe take back? Again, we're meeting with them on Friday.
I wasn't a part of the last search at this stage, but this feels really well communicated and organized and well outlined.
So bravo.
Their, their experience is really showing through, I feel.
And I did want to reiterate that I cannot be at the Friday meeting. I apologize.
I know, that's okay. Thanks. I appreciate it. We'll make sure we send notes.
Yep.
And one note, if anybody in the public is, is paying attention to this meeting is that we will be updating on the website. Where we'll be updating is the website or a page. That's gonna be the standard place. That's our, anybody who wants to know where we are, what the updates are, that's where to go.
Yeah.
This is what we feel. Website or. Speaking of community, do we have a plan from them where, specifically where in this community outreach is living? I know they're starting with us and the staff.
It's a question that we raised. It's a question honestly that Suzanne raised at the, at the meeting was about specifically community. So we're, we're still working on that. So what we've seen is a tentative.
Okay. And they went back to the drawing board on that piece.
Yeah, so that, you know, like there's clear articulation for, for staff and, but it's, it's, it also depends on what, you know, what kind. I think that there is like a plan for maybe a, a survey, so those came up in discussion last time. So we should know on Friday what it is, what format they've decided to go with, but I can make sure that we communicate.
And one of the criticisms about it being a survey was the idea that like when other governing bodies, like the Park District or somebody does a survey about something and they send it out and they're like, we want your opinion, you know, the community. And if I see it and I'm kind of like, oh, I need to answer that, I need to answer it, and then I don't. And then there's a decision made. I still feel like I was given an opportunity and it's on me, you know? Like, there's something very clear about a survey that goes out.
Yeah, I just, but I would also say, when they have done those other surveys and it's like, you know, and we've done a survey, community survey in the past, where we hired a firm to do it professionally with that. And not to say that Koya is not professional in their, in their approaches to this, but it's a different animal when you're doing like what we did and spent several thousand dollars just on the survey or what the Park District does and some, you know, annually or every other year, or the village does versus what I would imagine this would be. And it just, I, I feel, I feel like the words Bodhi McBoke face come up. You know, when you're not doing like a, like a, like a professional, you know, structured survey. You know, and so like I just, it's just one of those concerns I have. It's like, I hope they have a good answer for something like that is I just don't want it getting, you know, I don't want the answers getting spiked, you know?
Yeah.
Like getting shared around with, and and there's a control for duplicate entries sort of thing. And people, you know, and getting, and not to say that voices outside of Oak Park don't matter, but it is, we are the Oak Park Public Library and while we are open to all, the, the, the people who we are most answerable to are the voters and the experts of the village.
Can I ask on Friday, when, when if this comes up, that, that we find out not only sort of to Matt's point, how this survey is going to take shape and go out to the community, but if there are going to be concerted efforts to reach out to specific communities? And if so, how?
That's a good question. Thanks. I know that, I know that they've been pretty interested on the, on the staff side to speak to affinity groups that we have, you know, and I, so I think that it's very much, my impression is it's very much in their we allows and we can ask. So I will, we can definitely bring that back and, and get back to you on it. I, I wanted to say that to Matt's point, they did mention, and I think it's worth remembering, that they're going to sort of aggregate the information, you know, do you know what I mean? Like, we're, like, the public is not hiring anybody, you know, like, so they're, they're going to look at all the information and use the sort of gain perspective when, when it comes to creating, for instance, the job description, right? So, so it's not like a, it's not a vote on who do you want to be the executive director. That very much is still up to the seven of us, right? We, we, we are in charge of hiring the executive director. But all of those perspectives are, are really important and I, and I think that they, they seem to have a pretty good handle on making sure, you know, that they're giving us sort of the conclusions of the survey and the, and the feedback rather than just like relating every single data point to us.
Are they intending to get demographic data from?
I don't know, because the, I, I don't know about the community part, because of course, that's again, one of the things that we haven't really made sure. I know that with the staff part, they've, they're again, very, seem to be very conscious about confidentiality. So they, it would depend on what the numbers are, you know, like they, I think that if it gets to a point where the information is so granular as to compromise confidentiality, we would not get, you know, so.
No, I'm thinking more from the community perspective because, you know, to, to your point, if, you know, we send this out, I'm a mom, I'm gonna send it to all the moms. We're gonna take all the grown up books out of the building. We're gonna want every floor to be dedicated to, like, are we going to?
I don't do that.
I'll leave you the third floor. You know, if we, if we know, looking at these, you know, okay, this is a concern from a specific demographic and we know that's a larger percentage of our respondents, is that gonna help us to look at how important is that based off of, okay, this is a large percentage of people who actually care about the library? And also, okay, this is a specific concern only coming from this specific group?
That's an interesting question. Can I, I mean, and this is not necessarily about Koya, but it's, how, how do you think? Like, do you have any suggestions for how we can approach that without it becoming a majoritarian conversation? Do you know what I mean? Because one of the things that I feel very self-aware of or self-conscious of, given the last few months, is this argument about like a vocal minority being somehow dismissed. Do you know, like the, the perspective that just because it's a small amount of people?
This is why I wanted to toggle it to a conversation on age. Because young parents are going to have different needs from, you know, in the report today, we saw what older adults want. If, you know, there's an older adults group here and they all fill it out, are we going to get similar responses that outweigh, you know, teens who we hear are maybe not going to be as respondent? So it's not that I want to discount those voices. I think I just want us to be able to know where they're coming from, so we can see, are they unique to a specific population? And then the library is, I mean, I think we're gonna have information on, you know, what percentage of our patron population aligns with those respondents.
And to take a balance, you know, and, and with that, with that comparison to what are the community demographics and the, and our patron demographics, you know, versus the respondent demographics? And I think that's an important pieces, yeah.
Again, isn't, I'm a, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit worried because, again, if we just look at this seven of us, we do not reflect the demographics of.
No.
We don't.
The, of the Oak Park community. And so I am, I'm a little, yeah, I, I, you know, I'll just ask the question.
Because they're the professionals. Are they going to do it? If not, why? If so, why? If certain questions and not other questions, why? I ask why a lot. But I, I would also tee that up, especially if we're looking at doing outreach to specific parts of the community, how are we going to identify that responses came from that specific part of the community? So I don't have an opinion on it yet. I'd like to hear what their best practice is on it and then see if that. The other thing is that the timeline does have this moving pretty quickly toward being able to get, to get a job description out there and getting the information out. So I guess I might ask, like, what do you think would be the best way to get community input on this? They had suggested that, you know, our board meetings are a forum. We already have it existing and we suggested that may not be the best one. And so there might be, you know, they, they also offered to come here to meet with staff. And, you know, to be here in person to meet with staff and then staff leadership. Me and Suzie are saying that it would actually be better to do online than in person because of the way, you know, our schedules. So pulled back on the idea of them coming early. You know, if they're available and willing to come here in person, then it's appropriate and where we want it. So is that something that you think would be important for community input? What are the ways you do think that it would be the best to get community input and still move this forward? And you don't have to answer right now.
Yeah, so can I, can I, why I instead commit to getting back to you, we'll get back to you after this meeting? Because we're actually gonna be meeting, I should have said, we're gonna be meeting every two weeks. So there will conceivably be not just this meeting, but yet another meeting before the next board meeting. So that hopefully that gives us some time to ask the questions and get some responses, however preliminary those are. And then be able to re-ask, you know, follow-up questions.
And I took some notes, but if you can send it in your own words, questions, then we can ask them in your own words or we can show them to the meeting if you want, but we're happy to ask for you.
Oh, I did want to check Matt a couple, a couple of things. So we are still inviting every board member to come to the meetings, right?
As, as non-voting participants.
Okay, as non-voting participants. But also, you emailed me, thank you for that, all you today to, to say that at least two of us have to be in.
The building.
The building when that happens. So then we're looking at a hybrid format, right? So that there's, we, we want to make sure unconceivably the hybrid format will also include an open session and then a closed session.
When needed, yes.
Okay.
And the majority. It seems like a lot of arrangement. The majority of the times that we're meeting.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just saying, we will need to, Matt said that the attorney said it needs to be an open meeting.
Yeah.
So I'll need that by Wednesday for Friday, so tomorrow. And I, I mean, I can, we can just generate something that's like.
Very simple. I can, I can type something up very simple for this, for, for this week.
I can just modify an existing agenda and have it posted by tomorrow. I'll send it to you just to.
Yeah, that would be great.
Like I do with the.
Thank you.
Okay.
Then we'll get it up.
I'm actually, I actually might be back in the library tomorrow. Again, as a, I have some friends just coming from Evanston, I'm, I'm gonna show our library off today.
Are you bragging?
I'm so.
Oh, they're from Evanston? Definitely.
Please.
Well, one of them's from Evanston, one of them's from Rogers Park, so we'll take them.
Close enough.
Yeah. Anyway, so, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
So Madarima, for most of the times that we're meeting, I would be available to be.
In person, okay.
There might be some exceptions, but I feel most of the times.
Thank you. I, I think we do. So, but if something comes up. And, and again, you clarified that Lee is one of the two people, right?
I believe so, yes. Based off my conversation with Brett, yes. Because she is a, yeah, because it. Because she is a, yeah, because she volunteered and I, and I named her as a designate for the committee. And committees can be made up of staff members.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah.
Oh, that can.
Is that, do I mean like the mayor's level, or, or in her library or no?
Just in present, just physically present.
I mean, cool.
So that means that we should also be generating a Zoom link, right? Like by tomorrow?
Yes.
Because Dave done that in the past, Koya's done that in the past, so then.
It should be ours in like.
Okay, so I can.
Do you, would you, IT would do their thing?
And we share, and we share with them.
Okay. So, um, would you be, is it appropriate for you to be in touch with Koya about that? Or should I then?
I believe is the point for something.
Okay. Thank you, Lee.
Yeah.
I have a reflection on something that Christine said about, about looking for candidates for office.
Yeah.
Um, I am not running again, and I've been looking to find people who are interested in candidates. And they're not terribly representative of the community.
Yeah.
And this is, this is a real problem, that how do we get the representation as we're thinking about an executive director? And I'm hoping that Koya will be able to help us with that.
Again, I, when we're saying, when we say representative of the community, I'm not sure exactly what we mean, because if we're talking about pure demographics, then either Maya or I should probably be kicked out of the board, you know, or.
And I, and I represent a significant portion of the community.
Fairness on the half of me. Because the other half isn't representative.
So, so I feel like, um, so I just, I wanna be careful that when we talk about representation, we're not conflating different kinds of representation into this, this, this one thing, you know, like, we are literally all representatives in a different meaning in that we, we are proxies for voters. Uh, and obviously, we're all complicated human beings who have, and we're also the people who raised our hands to do the job, so like.
Yes.
And I, I, I think what Ted is pointing out, though, is like, there is, it is not easy to be in office. There's a lot of challenges that like make it difficult for certain groups of people especially, um, which brings me back to like the cycles, like, I would love to get moving on that, but I know there's been a lot of work elsewhere.
It's, it's dead in Springfield.
Well, I mean, I, I think this is like a systems problem. Like, it is just, the people who have time and energy and dollars to volunteer are a very specific demographic typically. And until we change that, we're not gonna have representation, and so, yeah.
I agree.
Or we're gonna have people who are on the committee who are actually bearing an undue weight of, like, expenses to be on the board.
That too.
You know, in terms of childcare, et cetera.
Yep.
That's not right.
It's true.
So we do need to, we do need to work on that. And since we have a election coming up.
Thank you for letting me point that out.
Yes.
Thanks, Tim.
Concerns, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so any other questions that we can, about the process? Otherwise, we'll move on to the information systems use policy. So, um, in the packet, you'll see the first item is the, the policy from 2002, uh, when we were ranking our MySpace friends. And then there is a, a memo from Billy, um, kind of going into the.
Fifty-seven, fifty-eight?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, no else?
Yeah, fifty-nine is.
Yeah, fifty, yeah, fifty-seven is the old policy. Uh, fifteen, page fifty-nine is Billy's memo. And then the beginning of page sixty is the new policy. And this was, uh, you know, crafted with, you know, what I was, finally noticed that by, uh, that we hadn't looked at this in a long time. Uh, you know, through the attorney's, HR source, and, you know, referencing other places, but this is where we're, the proposed draft from the staff for our revised, um, policy. So, any questions and discussions?
Um, my first piece is, thank you, Billy. We rely a lot on the comparative look at old policies and new policies. And I know that wasn't really possible here because it took a full rewrite, so thank you for the, the summary of revisions. And then, uh, Suzie, you had answered a question for me during the week on how this policy will dovetail with our asking for a survey through, um, the library work emails and us having some wording around how, how this meets the security and anonymity of that. Can you reiterate that for her?
Yeah, so the, the question Virginia asked was, if we're saying that you can't have privacy or confidentiality over work, because these, this computer, this email, this is all owned by the Oak Park Public Library, it's not my personal, so I should not have any subject or have said any notion of privacy. However, we do do an employee satisfaction survey, um, quarterly, right? Suzie?
Um, yeah, biennially.
Periodically. And that is done through the HR, which is our HR platform that we use. So it's a third-party source, um, and that is submitted anonymously. We have no way of tracing it back to someone's computer and figuring out who said what. And I would imagine for a company that we've engaged with, that they would have some sort of metric of, some sort of, um, way of collecting that data, confidentiality. Cut, you know, without collecting names, without collecting data. Um, and that would be something that, you know, the board could definitely reference, like, how do you, how would you ensure privacy and these things? So it's kind of two separate pieces. If we're looking for confidential information or, you know, um, kind of that privacy, and it is confusing, you know, Maya had asked me a lot about like, board privacy, what does that mean?
Yeah.
Um, it did also specify that like, yes, we have access to folks' emails. We don't sit around and poll our emails, we have no need to. Um, we do trust our staff and, but if it's, you know, you leave the organization, you know, we're wanting to, um, delegate the email to other somebody else. Um, and, you know, we do have access in, in litigation if we need to have the access in this email. I hope that clarifies things.
It was helpful to me, because that was, that was one of the, the things that was sort of clashing in my head. Was, we're saying privacy, but not confidentiality or vice versa, but it, it makes sense, yeah.
I do think, though, that there may be staff who still might have concerns when they hear you have no right, you have no, um, reason to believe that you have any sense of privacy. And then that they're trying to, you know, and, um, and questioning kind of trust. Um, so I'm just wondering how that's gonna be addressed.
I, I have to be honest, Suzanne, I mean, it's FOIA too, right? Like, we are a government organization.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I understand.
So I, I want people to be aware that anything you put in an email is subject to FOIA. And I think kind of starting out, so they're not surprised when they put something in an email, but they don't want it exposed.
Right.
You know, I mean, I, I think when you work in a government, it is a different situation. And I think for those of you guys who work in other organizations, the same rules apply, right? Your company owns your computer, your email, um, that's, that is pretty standard in terms of.
So can I, I, I wanna ask, I guess I have, I have two questions. One is, um, how different, so I looked up, I, I should preface this by saying that I, I looked up a few different libraries, um, information use or technology use, different policies, and, um, and I wanted to ask how, uh, this policy relates, this, because this is about staff use and how it relates to public use, because there are actually, I found, uh, multiple examples where the internet use policy is actually the same for, for staff in public or it's kept in the same sort of place, you know? And so that's, that's one of the things that I thought was kind of interesting, because if we just have like, then maybe that's a way of not, not, uh, of maybe showing that we're not like unduly suspicious of staff specifically. Does that make sense? Like, if this is, this, just because this is the universal policy for all folks using the internet or computer.
That's actually not a threat. I would, I would really push back on that, because we do protect people's privacy. You come into a public library, a lot of a public computer, we don't have any, we're not able to, if you see the document, we have software installed that like it wipes the computer for the next person.
Sure.
We are built on a foundation of protecting patrons' privacy. They're not subject to FOIA if they open their email in our public library, but we are.
Right.
You know, there, there are two separate, we're employees. There are patrons using this space, and I want them to understand that like, they should be able to come into a library, and if they look something up online, we don't have access to what they're.
So there's no, there's no appropriate technology.
That seems really important.
Yeah. And that is part of the library bill of rights and code of ethics and the things that American Library Association, that that's the foundation of libraries, you know, is protecting patron privacy.
I guess my question then is, if that is the basis of the ethics and everything, then why, why does that disappear being an employee? I understand the FOIA, and I think, and I think what I was asking about before was not so much, was like, how this is communicated to staff and how the relationship is with staff in terms of, um, staff that may be having trust issues? And just that they, you know, even explaining, this is, you know, part of this is because we're subject to FOIA, you know, so wanna make sure that you answer that.
So that you don't, right.
Do you know what I mean?
Well, I will say this.
Like, from a, um.
To explain that the.
Majoritarian kind of language or something, you know?
So.
That's more like.
I'm, I'm sorry, because that, that actually, I, I said that I had two questions, and the, and the second question I had was how amenable you are to wordsmithing, which I don't wanna do as a group here. But again, some of the examples that I, that I saw have in substance exactly the same policy. It's just worded a little bit differently. So it may, it may start with, we are always like, we are, like, nobody, I, I mean, uh, obviously, there's no policy that says, we're not watching over you, but it suggests that we take the, the question of your privacy seriously, you know? We're not, it's, you know, we're, we would, or the library takes, uh, very seriously, it's, it's a protection of, you know, staff rights as well, so that it's not just that like randomly, there's a computer search all the time. Oh, do you know what I mean? So this, this language, and again, I'm not, I, I don't, obviously, I don't have it at the top, uh, at the top of mind right now, but if we're, if you're open to something like that, which doesn't, again, change the substance of any of the policies, but maybe like starts with an affirmation of staff rights? I, and that's just something that I'm wondering.
And just out of, like, what you said, it's out of concern in wanting to make sure that they understand that we are subject to FOIA.
And that the library expectation is right imposed.
And that we're not, we're not saying you shouldn't expect any sense of privacy, but we're concerned that you might not understand completely how FOIA and working for a government agency might impact your use of email. Do you know what I'm saying, like Matt? Just so that it's more of a trust building, don't I?
As a point of your clarification, I mean, I know when I was a public employee, I had to do yearly FOIA trainings, um, at the county, at the court system, at the governor's office, as well as at the treasurer's office. What yearly trainings are library staff given?
So that's not something that's currently, but I know that when we do get in the height of some of the, you know, significant FOIA, um, requests, that it did come up. And I think Julie pointed out that kind of annually, they put it in kind of the R story, it's just a reminder, and here are some key facts and, and stuff like that. So we don't have a, you know, like, we have mandatory, um, and, and not speaking out of turn, right? We don't have mandatory FOIA training.
No, we don't.
Yeah, but it is something that we could.
And it's really difficult to hire, so.
Yeah.
We have a page on our, on our staff resources page.
Yeah, I, I will say, yeah, from a FOIA officer, one of the things I did was I was like, I want you to know the E in email is for eternal. It is paid for, this, this server is paid for by tax dollars. And every citizen has, and even non-citizens have a right to read what you are putting in that email unless it's coming from you as your attorney, and it says private and confidential, covered by attorney privilege. And then that's a different story. Like, so I actually would do like these manual trainings. And I was given that manual training, you know, regularly in every, you know, organization. I understand libraries are different, and also just the reality of, um, you know, we could have all-staff meetings because it was a nine-to-five, allegedly, nine-to-five job. Never a nine-to-five job, but, you know.
It's a different, but no, I think it's important.
Yeah.
And I would, I did, you know, this is very much in line with when I was working for CBRE and Northwestern. Both of those organizations had very similar.
Yeah.
Policies to this, where, and honestly, I would say Northwestern and CBRE, were both more clear that said, any given time, if we find anything in your system, you are fired. Like, you are, like, you are not to be using it ever, period. There was no.
Wait, not to be using it ever, ever.
Like, for, like, personal use ever. Like, never, like, they would, there would.
But is that the pre-YO policy?
No, it's not. We're, we're more generous in this.
Or very generous, I mean, in terms of.
This is like, ours was like, you, I know somebody who got fired for shopping on Amazon at work at Northwestern.
Well, I would say like comparing to like a worse option, isn't it?
I'm not saying it's a worse option, but I'm like, let's, let's be clear, like, there are corporate standards. This is, we're also an employer.
I understand.
This policy protects us as an organization.
But I, I, I'm like, I'm curious where you're hearing the resistance to actually changing the substance of the policy.
I'm not saying that, it's like, but like, there, there's a lot of contextualizing around, like, where, like, the trust issues from staff and like how this is gonna be feeling. But I also feel like there's also a context of, we are an employer, and that these policies also protect us as an organization and protect the management and protect the, this organization from legal liability and fiscal liability. And this policy also protects the organization.
Matt, I don't, I agree with you. I, I'm not, I, I feel like, uh, we're all, and, I mean, like, I don't, I don't, I'm not hearing anybody disagreeing with the substance of the, the thing. I think the, the most that I, at least I've tried to say is in, when we have language that is conveying the same information, there's a way to make sure that we're reminding our staff that we still actually respect them as human beings with rights, but we're legally obligated to do the things that we have to do. I mean, I don't, I, I don't see that as a contradiction to anything that's actually in the, in the policy.
Virginia? Billy, would there be anything that would keep us from putting the FOIA training that they have during onboarding, attaching it or linking it to this? And putting something that says, you know, please reference this in conjunction with this policy on privacy and proper use of.
You know, I mean, I will just say, like, if you look on our website, under policies, we have a number of library employment policies, right? Um, jumping workplace, grievance, health, and stuff like, there's a lot that they have to review when they get started. I do think we need to do a better job of like, maybe quarterly, reminding people, here's some FOIA information and kind of keeping it top of mind. Um, to your question about rewriting it, I guess what I'm hearing is to be more friendly, uh.
Yeah, that's respectful, I think is the way that I would put it.
Is there anything in here that you feel like is disrespectful?
Yes, I think that not acknowledge, like, the, the.
Like, if there's, there's a piece that you can say, that's offensive, I would, I would like to look at that part.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm a little bit uncomfortable. I don't think I ever use the word offensive, so I don't think that it's.
Or like disrespectful, I think I'm hearing the word lack of trust, that we don't respect them. So is there a way that we can build in, or there's specific language in this policy that indicates that we don't trust?
Yes, and I would rather not, again, if you want me to, I can go through this line by line during this meeting, but I would assume that's not how we want to do it. So I, I think that there are a couple of suggestions, and, and again, I'm happy to send what my suggestions are. That's why I started with a very honest and sincere question about how open we are to, to that part of the process.
That's for the board to decide. This is an action item on the agenda, so that is for the seven of you guys to decide if this gets tabled and we rewrite it again. That's not for me on the side.
I think it could do some work to, to meet, um, meet staff in a way that shows. meet staff in a way that shows more care um and while still also having more legal. And I'm not saying you're not, please don't get defensive, I'm not saying that you did anything wrong here. Just that it can come across in a different way that I think um would be more fruitful.
And, and literally the information about FOIA has actually not been here, right?
No, it's in there.
Mm-hmm.
It's the, the FOIA citation isn't right, but that's fine. It's just one thing, yeah.
Yeah, I know, if you're, yeah, it's bottom of page sixty.
If I may speak personally, um, working at a university as a staff person, um, which is very different from being the tenured person with, with the ability to say whatever you want. As a staff person, you are serving at the pleasure of your organization. And so, at the University of Chicago, we were told you should not speak to the press in a way that would be prejudicial to the reputation of the university. And I think that that gets to Matt's point, that we are an organization. So it isn't just FOIA, it's.
No, it's not just FOIA.
It isn't just FOIA, and it's a really, really hard thing. So if I was as a staff person against the Confucius Institute at the University of Chicago, I can't speak against the Confucius Institute at the University of Chicago.
But I did, I did.
But that's not, that's not the same, but, but I don't know.
Very different set of issues around privacy and the ability to speak and it's all in, in flux right now and it's from a timeframe before the, the social media and internet and everything that we're using now. So I, I'm sorry, but I, I think that's just a very different, um, that's a very different structure. I think um because we're elaborate and because, as Suzie said so beautifully, um, that, that, you know, it's important that, that the public comes in and knows that they have, that libraries protect privacy. And there is this very strong rounding on this idea of protecting privacy. And we have been hearing as board members from community and staff that there's a concern about trust. We can't ignore that when there's something here that's then recrafting in a new policy that we're approving. So um.
I, I agree, but I, I also see this from the perspective of the public. This is in part what guarantees that when we do have questions about this institution, the library staff and the board are able to answer them because we have access to that information.
I'm sorry, you mean by that information, you mean, you mean the policies specifically, what are the policies on?
Through like the, through like the FOIAs and, and other information. That is how the public is able to request this information is that there is not this expectation. But I also want to protect our staff in telling them that there is no expectation. I don't want to soften the language in a way that makes them think there's any daylight. Because, and I understand what you're saying, that the language is harsh. And it.
And again, and I, and again, I'm not, I'm not spinning straw people here. I'm literally thinking about, like, I did my homework and I looked at other policies and there is precedence for, for language that again, is exactly this. And I am employed, just like most people around this table at a place that has a social media policy and a technology use policy and the, the technology that you can use at home and, and to access. So it, it, it's not like any of this stuff seems alien or um illegal or completely inappropriate to me. But I do think, again, that there is precedence for language that indicates that what we're trying to do is in an environment where we're trying to keep everybody safe, you know? Uh, and I, and I think it's possible to do that. Again, I, I don't mean to speak for anybody else, but I, I am just a, a little confused about the, I'm, I'm more than a little confused about what kind of resistance you think, you know, we think is happening here. I haven't heard anybody say that we need to throw this policy out, that we refuse to have something like this at, at our staff. Um, so, I mean.
Thank you.
I would agree. I mean, I, I think like the reason that this is holding so much um discussion is because we all have day jobs that probably have similar policies and it's, it's not just about our library. I mean, to me, like, this is something that is such a 2024 issue because employers, employees, the relationship dynamic feels like it's gotten worse across the board. And so it is not just speaking about this library, like privacy really does go beyond building an atmosphere of trust and outside of library, like any employer. And so I do think like the framing, if we can keep the substance and just frame it in a way that talks about like why this is important in a way that we can all agree upon, I think that's the right move.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Do we feel like that environment of clarification, do we want it written in the policy or is it more important to be in the delivery?
I think that every other discussion that I've had at this board table around policy has assumed that the policy itself reflects our approach to, for instance, staff. That, that it's not just about literally bullet pointing the act, but.
Meaning that when the people around the table change.
Treating people with compassion.
Yeah. The, the delivery might change, but when the people are on the chain, the table change, the policy would have to go through the same process it's going through now, so it's okay that way.
There you go.
Right there.
So this is an action item.
So I, I have, I have actually.
And I, and I just, hold on, I, I think it'd be helpful to maybe hear from, from Billy.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanna speak to something here. Um, may I help move this conversation along? We, we've updated a lot of policies over the years, not as many as we need to, there's a lot more to go, so. Because it's, it's hard to bring a policy from this board and get it approved. But I do agree with what Maturima was saying. Maturima, you're, you're asking like, can we, you know, we've, I've, we've done a lot of work with the policies to use more plain language and get away from the legalese. This, this is like the legalese. Like when I, when I read this, I don't see any law with it because I read it every day. But I've had instances recently where staff members read a policy like this and I go, wow, like, I read it, I don't see it, right? So can we do work to, you know, make this a little bit more digestible or like, um, uh, what's the word?
Accessible?
Yeah, accessible, like yes, because I did not go through this with a fine tooth comb trying to do that. I think we can work on that. It's just, it, it, it takes, like, you have to take the information from an attorney, like figure out what it's trying to say and then try, try to use, like what, how would I explain it to a staff member and then, then kind of interpret it that way? It takes a lot of effort. And so that's, I think that's why you're looking at.
The other thing I wanna bring up to that point is if we soften the language so much, we need, this, the thing that I think seems to be missing here is these, these policies, while there's the staff part, which you guys are very concerned about when we hear that, is it also protects the library. So if there is a violation or if there is something and we have to go to court and we soften the language that someone says, oh, well, that kind of is fuzzy or that's not clear, you know? It is harsh, but it is very clear and it's written by a lawyer, so it is defensible, right? Like if there's some sort of violation to it.
That's why I think we're talking about framing.
Yeah, and I think that I, I have.
I just wanted to make sure that if it's clear, why can't you have to go to the library?
I have full confidence in the staff and in the leadership of this library that you will not let us go, let us pass anything that is very soft, so soft that it is legally indefensible. Again, in my experience being on this library board, that has not been the case. Where we've been able to pass a thing that was incredibly, again, I'm not sure what the, what the worry is. I like, I, I don't understand, I don't understand, I, I just, I'm truly flummoxed at the concern. Like, do you, do you think that we want to say that you can use your computer for whatever it is that you want?
My literal only concern is that, to Billy's point, somebody reads this, however we put it, whether it's too soft or not understandable, and somebody does something without the expectation of understanding what can happen with that information. That's my only concern.
Right, and I think that we can preserve that, we can strike that balance and we can do both.
Maya.
I was just going to say, I, I really appreciate your point, Virginia, because as somebody whose day job is in large part writing privacy and confidentiality policies and procedures, I kind of feel this might be a little bit too soft, honestly.
Really? What would you change? That's really interesting.
I would say, uh, the Oak Park Library um is aware that in today's, you know, age, like, you know, so it's like, I might change that to be like, open it up, make it a little bit more like, um, like taking into example the fact that like, we rely, I have two, three different pieces of technology in front of me right now, right? That is just the reality that we live in. So I could see changing that to make it a little bit more straightforward. But then this policy outlines the reasonable expectations regarding appropriate and professional use of all library's technology and communication systems. Like, I, I think that that can be a little bit stronger, like, hey, like we can start it soft and then we can just move it like this.
So again, again, it was just the framing.
Yes.
Right, which is a framing, so no.
And again, I'm trying really hard not to do that actual word setting here.
I, 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 I'm getting, I'm, I'm getting that piece, right? So I do, I'm, I'm trying to note like where I'm trying to get your concern. But I think that it's really important to, as I'm reading it, I see a lot of just long sentences, like, for example, the scope, sentence one, or sentence two, paragraph two, that's like one sentence.
Uh, Maya, again, I'm.
Cutting them down to make it a little bit more direct, a little bit clearer.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry.
Be helpful. And I don't know if it would, if it would address, like, even that humanistic issue. But that's something I just wanted to point out, is it's like.
I, I just, I'm, I'm getting a little bit impatient because I feel like fifteen minutes ago, Billy said that we can work towards making the language more accessible. And, and, and I feel like he's said that and that's exactly what you're saying. I think we've kind of, I, I, I think that we can just move on. I don't think we're disagreeing. And I think that we're like creating this fake disagreement that doesn't actually exist because we don't have the so-called softer language in front of us. So you don't know what I'm saying because I haven't actually put anything forward. And I think that the, the, the exact point that you're making, Billy already made. That, you know, that there is, there is legalese, it could be clearer. He's done the best that he can, we're, you know, we're giving feedback. And at this point, I think either we, either we commit to actually rewriting the policy, like literally we bring out our red pens and, and start doing that now. Um, but I, I was interested because you said that the policy was soft, that there were things that you would.
I think that, I mean, for me, I guess, so I'm saying sentence structure is shorter and more direct, which to me is sometimes interpreted as being harder.
I think that's what Billy, I don't wanna speak for Billy.
And I think Billy.
That's what we're talking about.
I think it's the opposite of what, I, I'm sorry, I understood Billy to be saying the, the opposite.
Yeah, we, I haven't gone through this to try to make this more, like, or less legalese, like I took it from the attorneys and then, and that, and that.
And honestly, I don't think we should be taking out our red pens. That's, that's why. No, I'm, no, I'm agreeing with you. I'm agreeing with you that we are not gonna, we should not be the ones doing the wordsmithing.
Can I make a, a request? I am actually worried that we don't have anything from twenty, except for like something from twenty plus years ago. And I feel like that maybe, like for me.
I feel like that's where the urgency is coming.
That's an urgency and that's actually a failure of fiduciary duties. Would it be possible for us to like pass an interim version so that there's something and like understanding this policy is still going to be worked on and we will vote on a, like differently crafted, but in terms of the, the general content, we can like say that this needs to be like something that, that is worked on going forward, but like con, like general contact ideological wise, are we in agreement on what's in here?
I don't wanna go out on a limb and say things, but I'm gonna go out on a limb and say things. I think we are in agreement on the substance, not the delivery.
Okay.
I think what Billy has offered, checking with Billy, is to put the same treatment to this policy that he has on our previous policies, to make it more easily digestible, keeping the same content, but making it more accessible to our staff to understand. And in that way, addressing the thing that we've been asking.
And it actually will address all the things.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because I just, I think shorter, more direct, straightforward sentences.
Inside of framing, which is what you actually said too, is right, the initial frame.
I am, yeah.
Billy, is that an ask that we can make of you?
Um, yeah, I'm happy to, to take another, um, go ahead, it's just.
It's the urgency piece.
Yeah, well, right, we didn't have to come to another meeting, which we're also, we haven't got to the budget discussion yet. But it's come to.
Oh, that should be a brilliant suggestion.
Yeah, I know. Um, but, you know, it's just, you know, you're, you're, you're looking at one or two months down the road before we can decide.
Yeah.
Are, are we able to, like, that's why I'm asking, if we can like make a motion that this is an interim at work updated policy, because I, I.
What, like put an expiration date on it?
Yeah, yeah. I do it all the time, be like, this is the next ninety days. This is the next ninety days on, that brings us September, October, oh, November, Thanksgiving. But on, on this date, the board will.
By that date.
By that, yeah.
This, this policy will expire.
Expire on this date.
In ninety days.
Exactly. The board has a right to continue, to vote to continue for another ninety days to give staff time to redraft it, but truly like, it makes me uncomfortable.
Mm-hmm, that we have nothing.
That we have nothing. And including the fact that like, the policy is drafted in oh two.
That's what I think is unfair of the staff. I think you guys are not being fair to the staff.
That is not.
Well, we're trying the best we can.
It refers to the right to.
There's a relation that's coming up, so feel free.
It refers to the right to privacy, which in twenty oh two was like very, it's, it's very different.
We have now, it's so antiquated.
It's very antiquated.
Doesn't apply to our work anymore, that we need to.
You know, twenty two years old. Suzie, I appreciate that, but we just heard about this policy last month. It's not like we've been sitting on it for twenty years.
I know, we sent it to you in the beginning of July, two weeks before the board meeting with a memo saying, you know, we, Matt had said, give them a two in advance, nobody sent any questions.
Because we needed to, you can tell we needed to have this conversation as a group. There's, I, I'm sorry, but that's how.
Do we feel comfortable with the option on the table?
What is my motion? How do you feel about the motion? Ninety days expiration? What is Matt, uh, the November?
I would even, I would even shorten it.
Well, okay, let's, I, I mean, I, I, I worry about, I'd rather have too much time because then we can revisit it in September, we can revisit it in October. But given that Billy has also handled like budget season and Billy, you can tell me take a long walk or a short pier because you are so on top of it, more on top of it than I am.
November seems reasonable.
Okay.
Yeah. It seems reasonable. It's, it's three more months of discussions of this. And you'll have a revised draft, ready for approval next meeting if you so choose.
Chris, you know what you missed was the idea that, um, that this become policy with an expiration.
Okay.
So that we're not living with something that's twenty years old right now. And that there is something here, but it expires and that gives us an opportunity to.
Yeah.
And, and then Billy would work on revising the language. It looks like he may have already started.
Oh, no, I'm just taking notes. He's just taking notes of what's been said.
And we feel like ninety days.
The expiration.
That would be November, right?
Yeah.
That would be the November meeting. The only word I have is because of.
Probably what I have is something to do.
Right.
Well, we might, you know, depending on where things are, but the, the search.
It is the twenty-fourth for anyone who's not sure.
We'll, we'll change, we'll change, we'll change that date, but.
Well, I'm sure we're doing that this year.
Um, and I will say that, you know, as it is, the twenty-six is, which is two days before Thanksgiving, is the November meeting, so we might need to address that.
We'll move that up. We'll move that up, we'll move that up.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the presented information systems use policy with, that will be, that it will be implemented only for the next ninety days, during which time we will, um, it will be reviewed by board members and staff for revisions to be submitted at a future date, uh, for a final policy.
So moved, second.
It has been moved in second and further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. Any assumptions, sustain? Thank you, Ted. It is approved. Clock starts. Yeah, thank you. Okay. Next up.
Cue the confetti, it's budget season.
All right, so we have, um, the, the staff has prepared a, um, a memo for us. This is a bit of a refresher, uh, for those watching at home, uh, and those around the table. You know, uh, July and August is the beginning of our, of our budget construction. It typically begins with the, an initial conversation with the board regarding, um, what is our general comfort level with, regarding a levy increase for the year, looking at the largest items related to, um, personnel, capital expenses, um, and those. And as, because, because part of the issue is, right now, we don't have numbers, finalized numbers for everything, such as insurance and, and I believe I R R F hasn't issued their. We have our preliminary rate, which is pretty solid, so. A little so. But, you know, tho- those pieces, you know, some of those numbers don't firm up, um, until, you know, later in September and October, because we are still six months out essentially from twenty twenty-five. So this is, um, a, uh, Maturima met with, um, Billy and Suzie Lee to discuss this. Well, give some feedback. And this is, you know, our first draft and really for, you know, the broad strokes of the budget, a chance for us to give the, sort of the, the green light or red light to staff to keep building under this framework of us general principles right now versus, all right, you know, pop the brakes, we need to, you know, change course, so.
Can I, um, Billy, do you have prepared remarks or did you want stuff to say?
I have prepared remarks, yeah, yeah. Actually, Matt's mentioning a lot of it, but I, 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 I might say a little.
Did that?
I might, it's okay, I, I acknowledge that, I appreciate that, but I do have prepared remarks.
Yes, I, I mean, if that's okay, Matt?
Yeah, you go.
Yeah, um, so Matt referred to the, the budget, I'm sorry, the, um, the, the memo that introduces the budget. You know, so we put together this memo, um, really it's just kind of to drive home some, um, some key things to consider while we're thinking about this, about the building of this budget. And I'll, I'll reiterate some of those verbally here, but they're all in, in writing there. So hopefully you had a chance to take a look at the memo. You know, it, yeah, in August, we're gonna look at, like, the, the budget draft shows up here. You're gonna look at some high-level things, we're gonna look at hopefully revenue, people and capital expenses. But then, you know, the ideas that we would get some feedback here tonight. And in September, we'll present draft two to you, in September, draft two, with the idea that we'll get more feedback then, incorporate everything to have a final draft, a draft three in October for approval. So our, our goal is to have this budget approved in October. And why October? Well, um, because we want to get the information over to the village in November so they can incorporate it in their budget, because they're the one who actually do the, do the asking for the, for the tax levy on our data. Okay, so it's a really important to understand before you get too far. You know, for six years, and I've highlighted this pretty well, you've missed that, you missed this operating deficit. He's, maybe it didn't be the memo, but, um, for six years, we've been approving, uh, operating deficit budgets. And you know, it starts off innocently enough in two thousand nineteen with a hundred and fifty-eight thousand dollar deficit. But you know, that, that continues and continues through the pandemic to, you know, in twenty twenty-three, that was over a half a million dollar operating deficit. And at that point, we're like, we gotta turn this around, um, we gotta turn this around. And that's what we tried to do a little bit last year, we brought it down a little bit. But our, our, um, uh, but our, our goal this, this year was to build a balanced budget. And we, and, and we did that for, for the first draft. We're operating under, under those assumptions internally, you know, but I wanted to make sure we bring a balanced budget for here tonight. But why is a balanced budget important? Why, why is it important? Because six years of this deficit spending has put a strain on our available cash. So we don't report on our cash flow, um, you know, in, in regular board meetings. But, you know, our cash flow, if you can imagine, most of our money comes in from property taxes. Most of our money is coming in from property taxes, twice a year. So like, these really big, big lumps, um, spread out throughout the year. And when we receive that money, we have to be able to weather the months between those tax distributions, right? So, um, how much money does a library spend per month on its operating? And I guess this, how much do we spend per month? I know, I know what really does. So, so it's a, it's a, it's an equation, um, I don't know if this is a financial term or not, but it's, it's our burn rate, our burn rate. How, how fast do we burn this and how fast do we burn this cash? One million, about one million dollars a month, one million dollars. So if we have eight million dollars in the bank and we have, um, you know, six months until our, our next property tax installment we receive, you know, a million dollars a month, by the end of that, you've got two million dollars left, right? So six months, we have six months of spending a million dollars a month, eight million dollars in the bank, you have two million dollars left. But the HVAC goes out and property tax, property tax, um, payments are delayed. And you start, you can see where the, we need to have more of a reserve available. And what's getting into that reserve is the, yes, the operating deficit and also using, um, a deficit budget to fund our capital projects as well. There's a lot of detail I just shared in there. Let me go back to the, let me go back to the budget. So I talked about internally, um, we've been working on this budget for, for well over a year. It, you know, it doesn't just show up as a balanced budget at your, at your August meeting. We, we knew last year at this time, we had to do the work, and so we've been working on this. You know, and, and the goals we've been using to guide our work is, we need to build a balanced budget. And that means overcoming a three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar deficit, three hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollar deficit, operating deficit. Ensure that our commitment to, and our alignment with the library's four strategic priorities continue. So, you know, I think, Maturima, you mentioned this when we met, about, um, a budget also being a moral document, uh, or, I don't want, I don't want to misquote you, but it's like, it's like, show me your budget and I can show you what's important to you. So we also want to make sure that we are, um, able to still continue to fulfill our commitment to our strategic priorities. Also, after last year's, um, uh, property tax increase, we wanted to go into this, um, budget season to ensure the property tax levy increase was held to a reasonable amount. Last year, it was eight percent increase. This year, you know, we want it held to a reasonable amount, and, and the number that we chose internally is three percent. Now, I'm, you know, um, there's a lot of different opinions on what would be reasonable, but we started with three percent. I think the village holds themselves to that standard, um, and we kind of use that as a, as an indicator. So that's what you'll see in the budget. But we also, um, in thinking about this and balancing a budget, a lot of times the, um, you're tempted to do it on the backs of your staff. So like, we're gonna balance this budget, but we're gonna, you know, start looking at wages and salaries, benefits, tuition, tuition reimbursement, professional development, slash it, balanced, we're good. No, we're not gonna do that. So we want to ensure, well, so one of the things we wanted to ensure, I honestly didn't know if it was possible, but to ensure that staff receive pay increases, to ensure that staff receive pay increases. And my notes here, I, I questioned this comment, but I'm gonna say it anyway. Because let's face it, it had one hell of a year. And this is not the year to say, oh, sorry, staff, no pay increases. So I definitely want to make sure that that's a priority and that those are included. So we had a work cut out for us. And thinking, and thinking of all of that work, I also just want to take a minute to stop here and thank all the library staff that have contributed to this. I mean, the countless conversations between the leadership team members, the management team members, finance team, other staff members, for analyzing every line of the budget, mulling it over, discussing it. How many lines are in the budget? There's over eighty lines to this budget, and each line was looked at and they'd say, what, what, is this reasonable? Do we, what changes do we make? That's a lot of work. But by doing that work, we were able to produce a draft one FY twenty twenty-five budget that is, that meets these goals. It's balanced, it keeps property tax increase at three percent. It provides library staff with an average of two point eight percent, uh, pay increases. There's details about that later in the, in the packet. It allows for our continued commitment to our four strategic priorities and remains flexible enough to support a new ED's vision, a new executive director's vision. When I talk about the budget being flexible enough to accommodate that, that vision, I mean, you're talking about nearly twelve million dollars of operating. We have it set up in one way, but it's also like, we can move things around throughout the year and, and fit things in. And then, yeah, most important, well, meeting our core overarching goal is balancing the budget and producing a balanced operating budget for the first time in six years. I, I mean, it's just, I didn't know that I'd be making to this point tonight and be like, say, hey, we got a balanced budget for you to take a look at. But, but we do, and, um, yeah, and I appreciate the staff work. So, I mean, my goal tonight, and Matt mentioned it earlier, I want to focus on revenue, so the revenue section, the people section, and the capital expenses. Yeah, there's over eighty lines to this budget, as I mentioned before. I don't want to go through tonight going, why this one go up this much, why this one go down this much? I mean, I, I can answer those questions. But I wanted to talk more about the, the bigger picture, revenue, people, and capital expenses. Thank you for listening to my prepared remarks.
Um, I, I wanted to say thank you to, to Suzie and Lee and Billy for meeting with me. I think it was almost two hours that, that Monday. Um, and there was a, there was a, um, a lot, a lot of things, a lot of ground that we, that we covered that I really appreciated. And I am, I'm also really thankful that they are somehow magically able to bring forward a balanced budget that sticks at three percent. And that, um, my main concern was the wages and salaries, because literally that number drops. And, and the concern was for people who continue to be here, what does that mean? And the, and the two point eight percent. And then, uh, and also thank you for then including this thing that we've seen before, the, the distribution of, of wages and where that would go. Because, um, I wanted to make sure that I understood how we were continuing to be committed to the sort of, um, I, I think, great work that we've been doing in being able to offer our staff a competitive salary. And, and, um, again, I'm not sure how they were all able to make, able to make all of those, all of those pieces better. I mean, I, I think I understood a couple of ways and how that happened, but, um, I just, I'm ready to say, uh, I'm ready to say thanks for that.
Yeah, thank you. I, yeah, one thing I want to drive home is, um, you know, because, I mean, for the last six years, we've, I mean, I'm harking on this death of the six years of deficit spending, but we've been doing great things with, with, with the money that we've been, you know, putting towards our operating, mainly increasing wages, wages for staff and access to benefits. I mean, those are not, those are not cheap and, um, they're necessary things. And, but we also now, we can't keep kicking the can down the road and now it's time to get to, back to a balanced budget. And, you know, Maturima, you asked how do we do it, um, with the wages and salaries line. There's a projection line next to that, and so, um, you know, there's a little bit of cushion in there, there's some things that didn't quite happen, you know, as, you know.
There's a lot of.
Things have changed throughout the year. And so, um, an average of two point eight percent pay increases for staff costs about one hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So there's twenty twenty-four projected, what we actually projected, we're going to, to spend, plus the one eighty still, still is going to be below, um, below what, um, the current, the current twenty twenty-four budget is. But we can assure you that all staff that are here today are moving into twenty twenty-five and their budget is four, so.
With that average two point eight.
Two point eight percent pay increase, yeah.
And again, that's an average, obviously, and it's not across the board.
Yeah, most, most.
Also have all staff in there, what?
All staff that are budgeted and here today in twenty twenty-four, the, we take everyone from here and move them to twenty twenty-five. That's like what I would call a status quo budget, we're taking, you know, we're not in a position of creating a bunch of positions. In, in previous year, in previous years, in previous budgets, we would take this opportunity and say, well, what positions can we add or change? Or what can we convert from part-time to full-time? When, unfortunately, those are discussions that have to, do have to be set aside, um, when you're talking about trying to balance the budget. We felt that giving staff pay increases was more important than trying to squeeze in, you know, one more position, or to add, to add a position in twenty twenty-five.
So what about the positions that have been lost in the year? Like, so those are not being replenished?
I think you're talking about the staff that's here right now.
Correct, yeah. If we may change it previously in the year, we're not going to add back, add back in those positions, or add, add back, add back in those positions.
But you've budgeted for.
Yeah.
Right, and all of those pieces, so like, so, so in other words, I, I think the question was, has it, has it been budgeted for the, for the current vacant vacancies that are necessary to the functionings of the library? Is that, is that the question?
Yes.
Okay.
As, as I say, what is, what is, what is this question really about?
So cut the necessary, the, just say that the vacant positions, you've budgeted for those salary pieces in this budget.
The current vacant positions, yeah.
Current, yes, yes. But you're not creating new positions because that would be up to a new ED, to determine and to make that ask.
What are the current vacant positions that are in our budget? Is it in here or?
Yes, I, I would prefer to, um, to look at what the current open positions are, and I can email that, email that to you. I can, I don't want to speak out of turn here.
That's fine, that's fine.
Thanks for all this work, this is all that, but it's incredible, like, it really, it's almost like, well, if I could do it now, why didn't I do it six years ago? But.
It's really hard.
Yeah. It looks very hard.
I mean, I will just say the conversations that we've had, everybody's had.
Yeah.
They're really hard. And it's, I want to give a big shout out to Billy because I think his consistency and his messaging abominations has been really helpful. Because it's kind of like, we would be like, oh, oh, okay, but what about this one thing? And he'd be like, we're building a balanced budget. Like, he would just kind of keep it, keep us coming back to this, like, okay, this is so important, we have to do this. And so, when you start that mindset shift of like, okay, well, are we really utilizing this? Or is there some way we can be more efficient? Or could we, you know, it just, it, it really is a whole, it is, is in play in every single conversation we have, thing that we do, so.
Yeah, it shows. And I, I mean, I know you don't want to go line by line, but it's nice to see it because it is just like, your choices make sense, like, seeing your work, it's really.
And there are things that you forget about until you see them in the budget because they're not something you interact with every day or you don't hear about from patients on a regular basis, so.
And we'll have, and there will be addition, you know, we can go into some of these other line items in, in September, you know, and, and those items. But I think it is, you know, it, it is not easy being the no guy when it comes to the money. Yeah, it's not so much no, it's just. Yeah, it's not so much no, it's just providing us a reason, you know.
No, no, I, I, it's like, you're, you're not, you're not the, you're not the yes man.
You're, you're not. Yes, yes, correct. That was a shift. Like, instead of trying, instead of saying yes to everything, we had to say like, let's think about this, you know, yeah.
What's coming off the, to make room?
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
But you can't do everything.
It's, it's knowing, knowing the numbers, yeah. And, you know, we have a balanced budget in the current view right now. But something, a discussion that just from earlier tonight, that's going to need to be addressed is, you know, the COIA search moving into twenty twenty five. I imagine the last payment, the final payment to COIA will also be in twenty twenty five, and that's not accounted for in here, you know, so I, I don't know. I would imagine that last payment somewhere between thirty and forty thousand dollars. I mean, maybe it's closer to thirty, thirty, but that thirty thousand dollars we had to the recruitment line is thirty thousand dollars now. And it does, like, like, so having a balanced budget is great, but like, every little change is going to, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
So Billy, you said you wanted to cover?
Revenue.
Income or?
Yeah, revenue, people, and then capital expenses.
So what, what should we?
I think the, oh, Suzanne, where you're going.
No, I was just gonna say, what other words?
Yeah, when I think about revenue, I think the first, I mean, most of our, most of our income is coming from property tax revenue, right? And so if, and then the number we have, we're, we're working with is a three percent increase, you know, like, is that where you want to be? I think that's the, you know, I, I, I wanted to provide you something that was like a reasonable number that, you know, it may go up, go down, keep it the same, you know, where, where's your comfort level with asking for a three percent increase?
I think it's, you know, given the volatility of the general economic, you know, system, you know, environment that we're in with all of the inflation and everything, I think three percent is a very reasonable level set for us to start with, you know. You know, who knows, you know, by the end of it, with some of these other things that you're mentioning and as other stuff, it might, you know, move just a little bit at the, at the, you know, you know, three point oh one or something like that. But generally, I, I like the idea, I'm, I'm comfortable with the idea of us being at, at a three percent.
Can I ask a question? I know we said we wouldn't go line by line, so I'm gonna ask that one line.
Well, I, I mean, I didn't want to like spend time going all the lines. If there are specific questions, I mean, I'm happy to, to track them.
Yeah, just the interest that is projected from us moving the money.
Yes and no. I mean, we've certainly have solidified the amount of interest income that we're, an increased amount of interest income that we're experiencing. But also, that line had been traditionally like conservatively budgeted for. So like, in, in reality, I mean, we budgeted for eighty thousand dollars, like, right now we're projecting over three.
You're getting to my next question is, why are those?
But, but, you know, we don't want to be too aggressive with our, with our budget there because when it doesn't come in, then you're like, well, you know, like, it's good, well, yeah.
That's what we're wrapping.
So this is a more realistic number than the eighty from last year?
Yes, it's a very realistic number. Linda, our accounting and finance manager, has, you know, scrutinized over this number, and she's very comfortable using one eighty-two. The, one of the other things that we got, you know, has the, what's the economic conditions that we're going to be facing in the next year? Like, there's a lot of question marks around that. And, and so, you know, we would rather be conservative with that number because our interest rate could plummet. You know, I mean, the Federal Reserve is already talking about, you know, cutting back on interest rates. Yeah. So when you hear those talks, like, that's also where that, it's going to impact this line, so. I mean.
We're, we're comfortable with this being a conservative estimate, even though it's a hundred K over what the estimate was last.
It's a realistic number, it's a realistic number. But when you talk about going through it line by line, I, I'm okay going through line by line of revenue because the revenue, like, I want to talk about revenue tonight.
Okay.
Something I want to point out in the revenue is, we talk about things that didn't quite pan out and should work out in accounting on. Sales, we talked about in the last budget, we go opening a store and doing more sales. We budgeted in twenty twenty four for forty thousand dollars in sales. If you look at our projections, it's less than ten thousand dollars. Because we're uncertain about, and we're not, we're, we're not planning to make a bunch of purchases to keep, to.
To restock.
To like, restock the store. And so, we budgeted as, we'll, we'll budget that as zero, but we'll probably have income coming in on that line.
From residual.
Yeah, just, just something we continue to sell. But it, it's gonna, it's, I would say it's for sure going to be less than ten thousand dollars.
A conservative zero is.
Yeah, and so then, so then if you get a little bump, you know, like five thousand dollars comes in on the line, then we get, you know.
Your response there answers my question about literally all of the other zeros there, which is that we are not just making a balanced budget, but intending to use any of the surplus as potentially actual surplus.
So, so, yes, so like, like, let's, let's say there's a little, I don't want to use this word cushion, a little bit of cushion. Because not everything's guaranteed in revenue either. Like, I mean, you can pretty much count on your property taxes coming in, but even that is not, not guaranteed and on, and on time. But you have a little cushion. And why is it important to have cushion in your revenue? Is because, remember, even with a balanced budget, we still have six hundred thousand dollars in capital projects, capital expenses that we're going to, to pet fund.
That we plan for.
That we plan, yeah.
That's what we're planning for, yeah.
I mean, because it's, you know, like you said, like, well, we found out this last, you know, in the last year was the chiller went down. You know, and like, that we weren't, that was not on our calendar.
Chiller two.
So chiller, chiller one was last year, chiller two will be, was scheduled for this year, but because of building and delivery, it won't be until twenty twenty five, until it's installed. A note about the per capita grants, the Illinois per capita grant, it's about four lines up from the bottom of the revenue section. It's, you know, about eighty-one thousand dollars what we expect this year from that. We, we expect to receive eighty-one thousand dollars next year. The problem with the per capita grant is dependent on the state dispersing that money to us on time. And it's been happening regularly, but again, like, things can change.
There was a period where it wasn't.
There's a period where it wasn't, and you're counting on eighty thousand dollars to come in and it doesn't. So that's, that's that, you know.
So we're looking at this not just from the perspective of what money we're expecting, but also the cadence we're expecting it to answer what you were saying before about cash flow.
Yeah.
If we can't count on when this eighty-one thousand is coming in, let's not assign it to something in the budget because we don't know when it may show up.
Yeah, we don't know when it may show up, and, and we also need, need some cushion to afford our, you know, what if some of the other lines don't pan out? What if interest rates drop? What if, what if the corporate property replacement tax bottoms out? You know, it's just, there's a lot of what ifs, and so we're, you know, trying to, to be conservative but also respectful of.
Well, we're looking at people. I know, you know, wages and salaries are a big chunk of it, but there are a lot of items in there where we can't actually control the cost on those. Did we get estimates from whom? Like, did we get, when we're looking at an estimate of what we think the, like, unemployment compensation or workers' comp? Like, how do we come up with those projections?
Yeah, I will say, I'll, I'll start from, I'll start from the bottom and go up since you asked about unemployment. Unemployment is one of those where it's based on our experience, like, how much in unemployment claims are we paying out? But I don't get that until later. Like, we'll approve this budget before I actually get our rate for twenty twenty five. And I estimated too low in twenty twenty four. You'll see that I budgeted in twenty twenty four eighteen thousand dollars, but our projected is going to be closer to twenty thousand dollars. It's not a huge swing, but I did try to account for that in twenty twenty five. But I just, I don't, I can kind of guess at the experience level, but until, Illinois looks at a lot of different factors for the unemployment rate, and I'll get that number in November or December.
So where, are we expecting it'll be modified before the final budget or no?
I, I may take another look at it, but I, I feel like that's a pretty good, good estimate. I mean, I know it's going to go up, but it's not going to go dramatically up. Workers' compensation insurance, we've been told to project for about a fifteen percent increase from the insurance company. Reality is going to be less than that, but that's, you know, mobile budget for the, that's, that's a placeholder number that's in there. I might have the final number for that before, like, I might have it in October or November. I don't know, I'll have the final number for that one. But it, it's, it's in line with what the insurance company is.
They're big enough that number, essentially.
Yeah, what they've told us so far. FICA and Medicare is just, it's a percentage calculation of wages and salaries. Wages and salaries in FICA are like locked up. And so it's, it's just a calculation. That's a, that's a good number based on the wages and salaries number. IMRF is going up, but the reason it's going up is not because of more usage, it's going, going up because our preliminary IMRF rate is increasing, and this, this is just to account for that. And then our employment, I'm sorry, our health benefits have essentially stayed, remain flat because we're members of the IPBC, Illinois Personnel Benefit Cooperative, and they, it's a, it's a cooperative, we have a lot of municipal governments across the, I'm sorry, across Illinois. And.
We're a local risk pool?
Yeah, yeah. And so like, we're very happy with their, with the performance. I mean, like, we spread our risk out over hundreds of agencies.
We're not, we're not, the librarians are not pulled in with oil rig workers?
No, no, no. Other than just the oil rig workers.
Dramatically reduces our.
Yeah, so like, it's, it's weird how they do it. We're, we're like, we're, they look at us individually, but they also were part of a pool, the mix, the mix of risk that they do. But I think it's important to note that this line is essentially staying flat from twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five. So that means that we did not include, you know, in the past, we may have done part-time to full-time conversions for staff, like adding more access to medical benefits. So that's not happening in twenty twenty five. Everyone who has health insurance can maintain that into.
This is the twenty-four, twenty-five apples to apples, the move you talked about?
Yes, yes. So no one's losing benefits, we're not changing benefits, but it's just.
Right, so, but you were saying that we've been, you know, the, the deficit that we've been running has paid for some really good things. And that is, one of those things was this move to try and make as many staff members go from part-time to full-time as possible, right?
Yeah.
And of course, also change the, the distribution in terms of who's. So I feel like, because that was my, one of my concerns, right, when we met, was that I was, or it was in one of the questions that I sent later on was that we're, it feels that we're taking, we're pausing for a minute to get the balanced budget. And I will also say that in general, my opinion is that this is sort of a good time to do it because we have interim co-EDs, but we don't have an ED. And we have also not had a strategic plan session with the board because we don't, you know, and, and I think that those are like the big value articulation opportunities. And so it seems almost a little irresponsible, in, in my opinion, to do it something drastic when those key pieces aren't permanent.
I think the other thing that we're, well, we're probably all thinking about it, but not, not speaking about it, is some of this came from changes we had to make during COVID, where we very deliberately tried to maintain the benefits and the pay that we had for employees in a time where everything was topsy-turvy. We didn't know who was using what or why or how, and kind of throwing money at making things that previously weren't terribly popular to, to make them accessible. So now that I think that has leveled off, and I definitely see, you know, through the use statistics and things, you know, people are still using it, but we now have a more stable, predictable usage, which we didn't really have during COVID, that I think contributed to some of that, that deficit spending. And now is a good time for us to level set and say, you know, we have numbers, we have information, we know what the usage is. Let's take a pause, like Billy said, leave wiggle room for the new strategic direction for whoever comes in. And, and, you know, I don't want to say run on autopilot, but let's run on the most responsible way to conserve energy, effort, and funds until we decide to make that pivot.
Yeah, someone described to me, it's like a caretaker budget right now. Like, we're just, we're keeping everything on what we really need now, the new DEED to guide the direction of the library. And so, keeping everything kind of, I guess, I like the whole side, I think that's a really good way to put it now.
Yeah. Can, just about benefits, I just want to go back and just reinforce it. When I started here in twenty seventeen, nearly, nearly seven years ago, it was August twenty eighth, twenty seventeen. When I started, there were about forty-eight full-time employees. Today, there are eighty. So just like, it's not that, like, it's like, you know, there are over thirty employees that have, now have access. A lot of them have stayed, a lot of them are in, in, you know, and, you know, moved into full-time positions. So anyway, that, and I believe in that work, and I'm glad we did that work. Just, yeah, we just had to pause for a second, get our, get things in order so we can continue to make progress.
And you've still made it a priority that they are, you know, we are still moving that bell curve the direction that we wanted to.
Wages and sal, oh, yeah, for sure, for sure.
So we may not be converting part-time to full-time, but we're still moving the bell curve where we wanted it to go with this budget.
Are we moving the bell curve for people at the lower levels now or at the upper levels?
All, all levels, all, all levels. I mean, it's just, the data is there on page seventy-one of the packet.
And then seventy-two is the projection.
Seventy-two is the factor, yeah. I mean, it's across, it's across all levels. I mean, you're welcome to, you know. There's, there's a lot more employees in grades one through four than there are in five through eight.
And looking at the ideal distribution, we've definitely pulled people from the lower and first quartile.
Yeah, and it's not a bad thing to have people in the first, first and second quartile. It, it, it's not necessarily a bad thing to have people in the first and second quartile. You're likely going to have, like, someone who just started or someone who's just gotten promotion to a new, new role, they're going to, the starting range is in the first, first to second quartile. So when someone has been here for a number of years, they should be moving, they should be able to see progress past the midpoint and beyond into the, into the third and fourth quartile. So we're keeping that progress going. You have to continue every year to give pay increases, and that's, and this is basically the justification for why we have to give pay increases. And if you don't, the market's going to leave you behind, and the progress that we made will be washed, washed away.
And so one of the things you're saying is, if somebody is in the, say, third quartile, but they get a promotion, while that would be more income in their pocket, the range of income may put them, because they are newer in that role, back into the second quartile.
Well, correct. I mean, if, let's say we have like a library specialist in grade three that's in the third or fourth quartile, and they get promoted to a librarian position in grade four, they're gonna, like, they're gonna be making more money, but then, but they'll be, but they'll be lower in the rest.
At the bottom of that, of that range.
Yes.
That's something I, like, it's been, I think in the back of my brain.
I just want, when the public looks at this to see, you know, there's so many people in the second quartile, that could be indicative of us doing internal promotions. And those folks are at the bottom of the pay range for higher positions.
Yeah, I think that's an excellent point, thank you.
It's a great point, thank you. Just to parrot, exactly.
It's a great point.
So you know what, if you're a brilliant engineer, you just need to hear it.
And while we're still in the people's section, we talked about, go ahead.
I just, I'm, I'm sorry, the people's section is the largest part of the budget, right?
Yeah, it's, it's like eight point seven million dollars on a twelve million dollar budget.
Right, so two-thirds, is that, yeah.
Yeah. It's too late for me to.
Stop asking him to math.
We asked to do thirds.
Was that the question? I just wanted to confirm that, yes. And so in the talent development section, now, it's not quite as large as the compensation section above it, but the talent development in the people's section is, you know, you might see a big drop in dues. That is, is driven by our ULC, our Urban Library Council membership is nine thousand dollars. And it's, the renewal is due in November of this year. And this would, this would say that we would not be renewing it in twenty twenty five. And that was where we generated that savings. So that, just full transparency, that's where it's at. We're actually increasing it on dues money that's available to staff, to write individual dues, professional dues. So that, just full transparency, that's where it's at. We're actually increasing it on dues money that's available to staff, to write individual dues, professional dues. But that one large organizational membership is not included in there.
I, I actually, I'm sorry, do you have a question about the, I'm sorry, Julie?
Can we, can I, I just had a question about the Urban Library membership. About when you were making that decision, just what were some of the
There's a question of the, the value, the value to us as individuals, also who, who are members of that Urban Library Council? It's mainly, well, it's, it's, I'm talking more of a personal note, but I don't know, Suzie, you might
So it is, it is, we're not the blank pit for it. It's for big libraries. So it's like New York City, you know, Seattle, Georgia, the bigger major cities are a part of it. And sometimes it's not always an apple to apples, like we're an urban library. And I think some of the issues around situations we deal with are, can, you know, you can get some resources there. But it, I think there's more, there's more, you know, a lot of the people who are in the director group are CEOs. I'm not one of the only directors, right? So it is just, it's a kind of a different thing. I think it's, you know, this is the first library I've ever worked at that had it. I, I think we can utilize it differently, but it does incredibly expensive. $9,000 is a lot.
Did we originally have it just because we're like semi Well, I mean, we're like urban adjacent, or like somewhere we
Yeah, I will, I will say that we were, we were in it, and then we weren't in it, and then when, then we were in it again, and then we're not in it. It's, it's, it's this cost, this cost benefit. And as we sat around and looked at this, as all members of the leadership team, we all, we all, like I said, we're not getting, we're not getting $9,000 of the benefit from it.
That would mean my next question is like
Yeah, we're learning things, but is it, maybe we could have learned in a different, in a different environment.
So there's like zero effort to get back in.
Correct, you can just say hey
You give the money, they let us
You give us a
Well, no, I'm asking like, if we decide to change our minds later, like are there massive hoops we have to jump through?
If the new, if the new is like, we have to get into ULC, like yes, we can do it, yes, yes.
The hoop is 10 grand. And then they let us back into the party, okay.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, I mean, I had to figure out a way to budget for it. But again, I think
How long have we been in it? You said it's been kind of, uh, a long
I don't know, leave, leave your
Devin wasn't in it, no, he kind of pulled out of it, and Justin, you know, wanted back in, so I think it's some yearly. But it's, you know, we've always been a member of the Illinois Library Association, the other Library Association.
American Library Association.
And those are the standards. And so this was kind of a
Those are about $500 a piece.
Yeah.
Okay.
So just to compare.
Yeah, I was gonna say 500 versus 3,000.
But, but in this dues line, we also pay for our, the Black Metropolis
Research
Research Consortium and maybe another
Society of American Architects.
Yeah, but we're, I mean, we're diversifying through different, different ways. So we're, we're, we're trying to leverage that money to actually get value out of it for the organization and the staff. Yes, all right.
So you said that the, with the wages and salaries or the positions, we are not losing any positions?
Correct.
So my question is, when did we freeze, like, when is this snapshot? You were going to say, you said August something and you didn't give me the
Yeah, I'll, I'll look at it, but it's whatever, whenever I ran the report in, in August, yeah, like July, August, there's, there's nothing to change. I mean, there's not been a change in what positions we have listed there that are either open or, or filled. But yeah, I will email, my plan was to
As an organization, we constantly
Sure.
You know, we have so many openings and people coming and going and internal shifts, it's, it's, it's a, it's constant.
Every, every time I sit down to look at that spreadsheet, because it's a spreadsheet of all, all people in all positions. And, you know, and through, through the month, I mean, it was, it was, maybe you might have noticed in the board reports that it was kind of quiet in June and July, with not a lot of movement happening. But that's picked up in August, we made it up more in August. It's just, you'll see in the next, next month. But like every time I look at the report, I feel like I can change a name or change a, change a position or something.
So I guess, I guess what I want to ask is, so the, what, in July, what, during our board meeting, we obviously didn't see like the line item of every single person who was employed. But we are likely to have hired more people, but we're not actually losing any positions that would have been in place in, let's say, July. Because I'm saying July because there have been no auditions in July.
Correct, there were changes, yeah, it would be the same.
Okay, thank you. That's where I wanted to.
All right, other than Chiller 2, what are we looking at for capital? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Any more, any more questions about people?
Chiller is about people.
I'm sorry.
Can you explain?
It's a lot of work.
The, I, I think, I mean, staff development and travel, I was trying to push that lineup a little bit more, but again, balanced budget. And so it's, it's, you know, if there's opportunity, if we can find opportunity, I will look to kind of increase that lineup a little bit more. But in, in, we're trying to increase that one. Tuition reimbursement, the same level, we feel like that's fair. We have a number of staff that rotate in and out of degree programs throughout the year, over years. And recruitment, that's one of those lines where it pretty much pays for reference checks and background, or reference checks and employment verifications. And sometimes the occasional posting. And $2,000 to $2,500 is enough, but this is also where we're charging McCoy Partners.
That's where I was wondering why it was
So I, so I projected that at 52,000, thinking that it was all going to be spent in 2024. But now some of that cost is going to push over into 2025. I just imagine, I don't know if they told you when they're going to bill us for
I can, I It's in the contract. It's, it's, it's like everything but like $2,000 will be billed this year. And then the final, then the final
That sounds really, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm like, it's beneficial to our
It's beneficial to our 2025 budget. But yeah, it was, the, the original one was basically, the original version of their contract was basically two, two payments, 50/50. And I, and after talking with Ron or Britt and stuff, like, they were like, you know, maybe you guys want to have a holdout. And I asked for it, they gave it, and I think it's about $2,000. And will, won't be paid until we have an offer accepted under director.
I just think it'd imagine it being much, much larger, so that's, that's, that's good. So if I could get those details, I can
I think I can get the jeans.
So, so that, I mean, yes, that is a, a relief for the 2025 planning, um, for that. But yes, that was, that was the, the terms, like, because I wanted to, yeah, it was, they wanted everything closer to the start. And I said, and they didn't even push back on it. They were just like, okay, here's
You want to pay us sooner? Okay, yeah.
Well, no, they were like, you know, when, like on the holdoff to, you know, until, until, like, the work is actually complete. You know, for, you know, punch list, sort of. They, they were, they were very accommodating to that, and I appreciated it.
So Billy, you need that contract, is that what you're saying?
I just, or just the details of the payments?
Also, yeah, I'll pull it together. I'll pull it up.
Okay, so that's all I, that's all I plan to say about people. I don't know if there's additional questions.
If not
How did, how did the, you said that you, you have the different kind of, what your intentions and your, your goals were in doing this? When you were discussing people, how did the four strategic priorities show up in that conversation?
That's a great question. I'm, I'm, I'm not going to be able to talk to an answer on that one right now.
We're next.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just thinking about it. I, I think it's one of those things where it's, it's, you know, balancing everything that we want to accomplish and have been accomplishing. I said I'm not going to answer, but I'm going to answer. Like, just balancing it, but like To me, it's, it's, like, the work is continuing, the people are continuing. And, but we've also, something that we have not been focused as much on is this financial stewardship piece. And so that, that's, you know, that's showing up. So that's, I mean, that's my, I've given it five seconds of thought, so that's my, that's my answer for five seconds. I can give you some more thought. Okay, so, because we still have one other item tonight.
Now can I ask about
The capital.
Yes, I was going to say to the capital.
Yeah, other than the chiller, any big things that we know we have on our
I mean, the chiller is the largest. It's over a quarter million dollar project. I mean, the
Chiller 2.
Yeah, chiller number two, yeah. So chiller number one is, is in place. I will say, like, for the bulk of last summer, you know, Matt, our facilities director was sweating, unintended, I guess, sweating like, like, until he got replaced, like, if one went down, we weren't sure that we'd be able to keep this place
And we were taxing the second one by trying to
So anyways, so having this backup, you know, it's backup now, but it also needs to be replaced, and it will be replaced in 2025, or that's the plan. It was budgeted, it was, again, it was budgeted in 2024, but it's not happening, so those funds will be, like, we just moved that expense over to 2025.
Anything else that we know, aside from the chiller arm?
I mean, if you, if you look at page 64 of the, the board packet, in the memo I've, I've listed, you know, like the big, the big items.
And the, and the furniture, the computers are part of kind of just a general cycle that we have?
Yes, the, yes, the worn and damaged furniture is, but the computers is a specific project where we have, how many computers do we have? Seven?
Over seven.
Over 70 computers that, on, on the public side, right? Or is it public and staff?
Yeah, two.
Public side, yeah, over 70 computers that need to be replaced because they can no longer be updated with Windows
Windows 11.
Windows 11. Because they've, they've just, they're just so old, it's like, Windows 95 works.
LED is stable, it will never, it is their best product they've ever made.
Well, I mean, the height of human existence was 1999.
So we're, we're replacing some of them this year with some of the capital money that's set aside for, for person. We're also going to be purchasing some next year as well.
Yeah, I think, what I think I was trying to raise is that the, the computers, you know, we have are on a, on a cycle of replacement. And when we first opened the, the building, every, like, the first round of replacements was like, we had like two, three years where we didn't replace anything. And then all of a sudden, we had to replace a third of the computers. And they're, you know, all, and we started to get into that cycle, and so we were kind of
It's what, a three-year cycle?
I, I don't know.
I don't know the current cycle.
I actually think it's a little longer, but, but, but yeah, there is, there is a cycle of, and I know I haven't planned out.
Three years was like the, was the first year we did it, because that was like when things were, you know, getting, you know, worked out, so, but it was, yeah.
And the LED stuff gets us some, gets us some energy benefits. Yeah, there should be some rebates from that, but I don't know if that's still, still happening. But we will, for sure, see some energy savings policy, but there, there may also be rebates.
That's what I was, that's what I was going for more, that, you know, I forgot that there are sometimes rebates from, you know, combat.
That's one of those items that Billy has zero, is the rebates from the LED.
Yeah, 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 again, when we make
So anything, anything would be a fun surprise.
That's, that's extra, yeah. And the leaking copper roof is a, is a, you know, there's been some issues and, you know, getting it fixed correctly. And I imagine, imagine fixing a copper roof is very expensive.
Here?
Yes, here, yeah. And some of the valleys, have you ever been on the roof? There's like some valleys. And I don't know exactly all the details, but some of it's wearing and shrink, over the years of shrinking and expanding, there's some cracks that need to be
I'm just glad, and I don't want to jinx us, you know, but we've, at least we're not dealing with flooding at the maids anymore.
Yeah, that was, that was awful years.
Better go back. But none, none of this is real wood, so I don't know what the two of your, you jinxed it.
There's like some wood in it, right?
There's wood particles.
It was in the same part of the wood. Don't say it's in the wood now.
Are you, are you going to break the news about the bees?
And you purchased
No, no. Why do you want to add
No, sorry, I must have been, I was thinking about another Billy.
Yeah.
Do they have bees, I hope?
Yeah.
So are there any other pertinent questions, germane questions to the budget as we're discussing?
A little germane to the budget.
Revenue, capital and people.
I see the polishing and destroying the tarzan floors. Is that, that's just ongoing?
No, there is ongoing maintenance of those floors, kind of strip and wax them. That's something that we do regularly, I think, twice a year. Don't hold me on that one, but I think it's, it's at least once or twice a year. But what, what Matt is, or Matt Bardage, our director of facilities, is proposing is actually, there's some work that needs to be done to restore some sections of the, of the tarzan floor, think restrooms underneath the urinals. So it needs to be restored. But then there's also some diamond polishing that can be done to the tarzan floor to refinish it. It may actually make it last longer, so we don't have to strip and wax, like, I think it might be good for like three years rather than having to strip and wax it twice a year.
So short-term loss, long-term gain?
Yes, like, we're going to, we're going to restore it, get it, get it nice and shiny, and it'll be good for three years, and actually it will save us costs in the long run.
There's, there's, there's been some, this is done before. I don't know if it was this exact process, but there was impacted in the last 20 years. There has been other times where there's been more extensive treatment of the floor because, to, to do that, so. I'm, I wasn't surprised to see this, but it's, it, it's not the first time we've, we have done a more extensive care service.
There, I mean, it's, I don't have the cost detail in front of me, but it's one of those things where it's like, I think it's like $20,000 or $25,000. But it is as a placeholder. And it's, it's one of those things that, yeah, it's probably not mission critical, like, we don't have to do it. But it's one of those things, you just keep pushing, pushing off and, and eventually you will have to restore the, restore some of the section before.
I'm guessing it becomes more expensive, or potentially the
I don't know if I can speak, speak to that, but I would imagine
But we would still have to do, we'd still have to do the mid-year. If we didn't do this, we would still be paying out to
We'd still be paying to, to strip and polish it, yes. This would replace that.
Any further questions? Okay, it would, you know, and, and this was not the only time that we could ask questions about capital, revenue or people. You know, these are not off the table for further discussion, but I would, you know, do we feel comfortable with the direction staff is going? I would like to give them a sense of the board that they are moving in the right direction towards our, towards the budget. Or do we need to throw up any flags?
In, are you talking big picture or
Big picture.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, I know it is, it is, you feel, you personally feel
I feel like you all are good. We should move, um, out of September, I think.
We should what?
I, I feel comfortable with what you all presented as like a first draft to continue from there.
Yeah, we'll, we'll continue to kind of like, kind of, you know, tweak our numbers and make sure we get them right. But if you're having the overall direction, what you're going to see in September, or, and at the next meeting will be something very similar to the, to what you're looking at now.
I was, I guess that was going to be my question, was that what, what can we expect in the September budget that would be different?
Just more solid numbers, like more, like we have more confidence behind the numbers. Yeah, if you need any additional explanation, we can prepare, prepare that for, for September.
And when you're talking about, you know, leaving kind of enough room for our new ED to have their vision and all of that, how does that show up here?
So the way I explained it, and the way I was talking about it with, with Linda, our accounting and finance manager, was it's essentially a $12 million budget. And with $12 million, you should be able to do a lot of, a lot of things, and we, and we can. But let's say the new, the new ED starts in February. And after a few months, they start, they start getting a lay of the land, they start saying, well, why would you have this? Why don't you have this? It's like, we can do whatever the next ED wants, we just might have to make some hard decisions. We have money to fund, fund different things. It's just like, and we can
It's the same conversation you had now, what comes off the plate, what stays on the plate.
Exactly.
But we have enough money to move around to probably cover the things that
Yes, $12 million in a library of our size is enough. It's just how do you, like, like, what are you going to prioritize? Where do you want, where do you want to, you know, focus? What, what positions do you need? What, I mean, because really, when you come out of the library, it's also, it's staff, it's our, it's our, it's our staff. Where do you wanna, where do you wanna, you know, focus, what, what positions do you need, what, I mean, cause really, when you come out of library, it's also, it's staff, it's our, it's our, it's our staff. So, yeah, I mean.
And I really do think a new ED is gonna take anybody who's worth, they're, you know, worth the salt and everything, they're gonna take some time to figure out who that is. They're not gonna walk in the door and say, here's all the things you need, you need to learn the culture, you need to learn what this library is, what a park is. And, and I really think it's gonna take some time and my, my hope is that like, we do this work in twenty twenty five, they get comfortable, you know, maybe we can add a few things there. But then realistically, August isn't that, you know, we're starting work on this and.
Right.
Oh, May twenty eighth is when we started this year.
May, so then they can start thinking to twenty twenty six, you know, they build their vision to the next one.
They build their vision to that, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, but that said, if they were like, I need to be a member of ULC, like that's important to do, like we can figure that out, but.
Yeah, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, well, where does that kind of shift happen?
We're, we're not running every line at bare bone.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, right, so it's two, two things I want to add to that, as Suzie was kind of building in, is that like, we talk about by the time the new ED might make a decision, it could be September of next year to change something. Then we want to fund it in twenty twenty five for three months, we just have to make sure we build it into twenty twenty six. So, but these will be discussions that happen, that happen next year.
So ED wants a VP?
Yeah, well, again, it's a.
No, I just thought you appreciated when you like included that in your opinion on how your priorities, and I just wanted to understand it more, so that helps, thank you.
Yeah, and there was another point I was gonna, gonna make, but I, I've lost it, but it, yeah.
It was a juicy.
When you remember the four AM, then write yourself a little note.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Billy, I think the consensus is we're, we're, we're moving in the right direction?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. We really appreciate all of this work. So next is new business bylaws of the board of trustees. Madhuri rightly pointed out that it has been some time, and honestly, I can't even remember, I mean, clearly we did it in twenty eighteen, but I don't even remember doing it in twenty eighteen. That we've looked at these, and that may have just been the fact that David brought it up to us and said, hey, look at these over and vote to approve them. We may have done something wrong, I don't remember. So, but the procedure of any changes would be per the bylaws, I haven't looked at this. We, we would need to make, propose a change at the next meeting and approve at the meeting after. Any, any amendments cannot be approved at the same meeting that they are initially.
Presented.
Presented, thank you. You are with the words again. So, you know, these are general programming principles of our structure, how we, you know, proceed through meetings. I think technically we've been, you know, it lists how we order our agendas, but we have been doing visitor comments ahead of trustee comments since, I don't know when. So it's, and we do our director report sooner, so I think that, you know.
Yeah, I, I didn't know capital O order meant the order of business must be addressed, or this is the actual line item one, two, three, four order. I took it as just address all of these things.
Yeah, and that's. Yeah, that could be, and, and I think like, you know, you know, and then maybe that's the thing, you know, I'm, I'm fine with that. I, I think it's, of course, we can amend our agenda during meeting too, to move things around. So that was just a point of like, there are these things, so. Any initial thoughts from anyone about the, our bylaws?
And this is just as it exists?
This is the current format that has existed since twenty eighteen.
Can I, so I was, the reason I was in the bylaws is because I was thinking about this conversation that we keep coming back to about how we can, how we can make in the twenty fourth century decisions, do you know what I mean? And I'm just trying to figure out if there is a way that we could do asynchronous work that is still not transparent and compliant, you know, and, and that's one of the, one of the things that I was hoping, you know, like, I, I don't know, like, the, my four AM plot is about like having, I don't know, a, a, a public website or a public facing website where people can't comment, but, you know, anything that the, that board trustees write back and forth is available to see or something, do you know what I mean? Like, somebody that we're being complete, like about a certain issue which comes up in between the regular meetings, because it does seem that a month is a, a long time, given the speed at which things are now moving, which may be different from, you know.
Sure, and I, and I am all for finding ways to improve our efficiency and, and, and do this. I think it's, we are, you know, is it a question of our, that is an, an item that's governed in our bylaws? Or is it a matter of, you know, so I mean, that's by statute, you know, and that's, and that's, and that's the other question is.
Well, I, I said bylaws because Article seven is about meetings, right? Article seven Alpha bylaws is about meetings and it's about what the structure of every regular board monthly meeting is, right? There's, there are articles obviously about like committee composition and I, and with, for instance, the situation that we're in right now, I think it would be great to have some clarity around ad hoc committees which use a combination of board and staff members. Do you know what I mean? Like that, that kind of stuff, I feel like in our committee, if we have it, then you don't have to go to the lawyer every time to check.
Right, well, the, the, well, again, the committee and stuff like that in court is, it's actually dictated by, by state law. And, and that's, this is, a lot of this language in here is just a reflection or a reference to existing statute.
Sure.
And so like, you know, the thing, you know, the definition of quorum and an ad hoc committee is, you know, is just an as needed thing. And so it's, it's, I mean, it's up, I'm sorry, because you, you mentioned like the inclusion of staff is not necessarily.
I'm saying that there is no, in, in our bylaws, there's no clear guideline about how we can, like what would consider, what would be considered a quorum in a, in a committee that's, that's both board and staff connected, do you know what I mean?
It's always, it's always a pipeline.
It, it, a quorum is a quorum, doesn't matter if the staff is involved or not, if it's a committee, quorum applies. It's, it doesn't, the, the calculation doesn't change based off who is a, who, even if it's members of the public who are on it, the same calculations of quorum applies.
Okay, so maybe quorum was not the best example, but I, I feel like, you know, I, I feel like there have been a couple of chances, or just in, for instance, in today's meeting, or today's conversation, you know, like you said, that there are things that you have to check with the, with the lawyers, right? And I think that instead of having to send somebody to go check with the lawyers, if we're able to clarify in our, in our bylaws, how we, a, as long as they're not in contradiction to the statute, to state, state law, like if we have like a model for how this kind of committee, this kind of work, you know, that I, I personally think that we may be interested in looking at the, the duties of the officers and seeing if there's anything in particular that we would want to maybe add to what those duties are. Like those are the kinds of things, I, I mean, these are, this is what I was thinking about, you know, or those were the, those were the three things that I wanted to think about. Was the duties of the officers, the kind of meetings, if there's any way that we can make work happen in between meetings that still complies with all the requirement of.
We can, we can establish committees that, that look, you know, we could establish a policy review committee that, you know, goes over this, you know, that goes over things ahead of time. We can set up any kind of committees, I mean, I've, I've looked at our libraries and they have committees for all kinds of things. We've had committees in the past and it's really just a determination of what the board wants, we can establish it. And, and make, and make it a standing committee that is, that every, every time we elect officers, the board president assigns this group and they will serve for this length of time on this committee and this committee will continue until the board as a whole decides to not have that committee anymore.
I've seen, I've seen committees be very effective at getting the work done. You know, you have a personnel policy meeting that's reviewing the policies and having the conversations and working with Billy, you know, to craft that. I've seen, you know, a budget and finance policy committee, I think because if you have a smaller group kind of doing the work and being more efficient, it keeps you guys more than each other. You know, I think it's whatever board wants, I think what I, I was a little shocked when I got here, the work committees. And there was, I think, the historic, history was that it wanted, everybody wanted it to be a committee of the whole, work wanted to be done that way. Which is, you know, a one way of approaching the work, but if you think it would be, I do think it would be more efficient to have committees.
And I, I think the example to the committee of the whole question that I think, because Suzie had asked about was, why wasn't it, we didn't have a budget committee? And it was, I think for many years, what ended up happening was, all the discussions that had happened at the budget committee happened almost again verbatim against, amongst the whole board, that there wasn't, and, and it, and it wasn't a, it wasn't a matter of distrust of the committee's work, it was just, it was a lack of understanding of the kind, of the, of the scope of discussion that already happened.
Yeah.
And, you know, and I think perhaps the committee did not do a good job of saying, we met for two hours and, and did this, it was like, okay, here's our draft budget. And so all the conversations about everything went again, and there wasn't a report from the committee similar to what, something that even akin to what Billy typed up for us that kind of broke it down a little bit, it was just, okay, here's the spreadsheet. And so now all the questions come up again. So with a better understanding of how that communication can be handled better, I'm open to ideas of committee, you know, you know, discussion of establishing committees that look at specific things that we look at, whether it's the budget, whether it's policies, whether it's all these different things, so.
Yeah, I think that's, that's fantastic, and I think that, you know, maybe, maybe identifying a couple of standing committees might be a good idea, you know, so that there is, like with every new iteration of the board, there is an understanding of what that work includes. Or typically, do you know, like typically, so.
And Madhuri, I think to your point, to yours is, then us laying out, what are the expectations of these committees? What do we expect them to bring back to the board as a whole so that we're not reiterating everything and we are getting the gains out of having a subcommittee?
So I feel like what, oh, go ahead. But as I say, I feel like what I would like to see would be this document as a Word document and like a pen. I don't know if we necessarily, because I, I, and my understanding is for the bylaws, it is appropriate for the board to take the pen, right? Oh, yeah, 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 right. Yeah, you're right, yeah. I would mind, I would think not, you know, my. But I think it might be appropriate to do the pen, I don't know if we need to like lay out, we need a ledge committee, we need a budget committee, we need a policies committee, but I think it would make sense for us to tighten up what an ad hoc committee would do. Like I know with regard to the EC, like, we did specific reports and it was like a very, a very specific tight little piece. And so like we could do something like that where it's like, we would regularly update the board and copy the interim executive director, executive director, you know, senior leadership, whatever. And so it's like, it was a very specific thing, we did present a particular piece to the board, we presented a specific document. So it's like tightening up that bit, I think makes sense. I, I don't, I don't know, and I, I'm not saying that you're saying this, but I, I would, I would, I would behoove us not to necessarily like be so prescriptive that we're saying like we will have X committee, Y committee.
Actually, I am saying that.
Oh, you do, yeah.
I would, and I would side with that, I would say, like, I would like, I would prefer us to like, clear expectations.
Around like, around a couple of issues, like I think that policy is a, is a good one, I think that budget is a good one. I think that we should have, I, I would argue, you know, and I, and I understand that that means that I or whoever has to bring forward language and get that approval or whatever, but I would argue that at least identifying a couple of key issues around which we have regular checkups or reports would actually be useful.
May I, to your point of going, oh, sorry, Christine. Oh, sorry, you're on my phone.
I'm sorry, um, would you, to bridge the happy medium here, we reelect officers every May. Would you be okay with a reevaluation of what committees we keep, add, drop at the same time?
Yeah, absolutely.
So we're still within this, only looking at the procedure of what is expected of various committees, but then every year we would reevaluate, what committees do we want at the same time we put people on?
I think that's perfect, I think that, you know, even in the language where we talk about like the fact that we're supposed to be annually reviewing our bylaws, which firstly, I think could be like by, like every two years, but, but whatever, you know.
Well, it's a new composition of a board every two years, so I think that makes a lot of sense.
Right, that's what I was thinking. So, so like if we do every two years, let's say, then we could say, and at that point, review, whatever, you know, and the, the committees are, or, or something, I don't know. But yeah, I would be okay.
Okay, sorry, I'm not trying to pick you up, thanks, I'll make sure I acknowledge type next.
Very, very, very simple question, in Article three, we have, in this board, we have now appointments which are by statute. And we have a four year term, but that's not necessarily by statute, we could have a six year term, whatever. I'm, I'm a little confused as to who is in a two year term and who is a four year term at this point.
We're in two years.
Okay.
Everyone else is in four years.
Okay, and you were appointed.
No, I was, I was, I was elected.
And you were elected.
No, she was appointed.
I was taken as elected.
We're not all appointed and.
Everyone here is currently elected.
Okay, so we're all.
Everyone here is currently elected.
And so that the, what it says is that there are three people who are elected in either years and four in odd years?
No, they're all odd years.
We're all, we're all, our elections are always odd years.
Always odd years.
There's four up, there's four seats up.
Okay, so there, there will be four seats up, and, and two of them.
Everything up in, in April is a four year term.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It just got shifted because of people ending their terms early and then being appointed.
Yeah, so, a, a, as a step towards procedure of and process of how we look at this. You know, we did, we had the one document that we were working on in Google Docs where we were putting in notes for that. Would, as long as no, no more than two people are in the document at the same time, because two people is the maximum. That is, that is a guidance from, on, on this is, is there comfort in putting this into a Google Doc? And all of us, like making notes and stuff on suggestions that we can then review and discuss for, you know, changes? And perhaps even if there's enough consensus in the document to have specific amendments at our September meeting?
Yes.
Can I just ask a question, is this essential to do now, just because we have the search going?
Not.
Is it essential to do before people decide whether or not they want to do that?
And I think it's like, not everybody needs, like, if people have time, they can get their comments, and if they don't, they don't have to. I think this is where we can like lean on those of us with some capacity. I, one thought I had, like another committee idea was one that came up last month, I think Marianne brought up the idea of having like, like old documents, like historical documents, it would be really nice to have a committee that was responsible for just like organizing our.
Recall something.
Our, our, our references.
Yeah, it is, it's. I, that's what I've, I mean, that's not our work, because we need to like get our stuff together, I think, and it does, so I, that's a thought, is to have.
Okay.
Kind of, and, and I guess like with officers, you could have, like that might make sense under a secretary to be, or like, we could think about the finance officer.
Same with finance being with the finance.
Yeah, I like it, I like where we're headed, I feel like it makes more sense.
And no, I don't think this is super urgent, but I need to, who's narrowed down before we ask people to fill these seats.
No, I mean.
Yeah, no, that makes a lot of sense, I just, yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, I think.
Suzie, now I keep thinking about that one book that you had about how groups make decisions. And I keep wondering if there's some way to.
It's hard, because like Robert's Rules and. It's hard, because like Robert's roles in institutions aren't always like the most nimble, I would say. Um, but it is like, there, there's some good guidance on like how to have a facilitated conversation.
And I would love to, yeah, I would love to, if we're looking at that, and if there's some way to bring that into either the committees or this bylaws or something, to like really tighten up, to use my language, you know, like, how we, how we go about things and how we function as a seven-person board. Um, I think we've been relying a little bit, yeah, on like, the chair does this, and then, you know, and I think we need, we need to have a clearer idea. I think we have an amazing board, you know, and we have this like mind that works beautifully together, and, and if we have a clearer idea of how that can function. So any input that you have on that?
I'll, I'll definitely take a look. I'm interested in the bylaws. I brought up the bylaws in December, because I was like, we're not responsible for our collections, but there's something about our.
Yeah, that's, that's a little showy to me, actually.
Um, but I, I'm happy to look at it and look at that book as well, with it, um, to think about bringing.
Who wants to set up the party line Google Doc?
I'll set it up.
That, that, that's actually.
Um, in that, so there should only be two people in it.
Yes.
It's from LA, I guess.
So would it makes, would it make sense to be like, Maya, you, you, you can make your edits like.
Well, we'll see, we'll see.
Just like you just, when you get in there.
When you're, when you're in there, okay.
Okay, that's, that's all I want to know, is whether or not.
Yeah, here's the thing.
I think the essential part is, if you're not working on it, make sure you leave.
Okay.
So nobody looks in and goes, oh, there's already two people here, and nobody's actually.
Got it, got it.
So basically, you just have to knock on the door, then, you know, you have to go in and see if there's two more in there.
How are you gonna be?
I have, I have two, I have two questions.
Knock.
Uh, and that is, Matt, are you, are you volunteering to be the point person, maybe, to make sure that we get nudges or?
Yes.
Okay.
The white nudges.
My, my second, my second question was, i- if not, can you please? I just, just if you would say no, and then, and then the, uh.
I think we should add to our bylaws.
Just if you could also be the point person on the bylaws thing to let us know that this is, you know, just that is.
It's, it's still a thing that, yeah, I will be gentle.
So we'll review this next month?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll find out. Yeah.
So that means that we should have it done like a week ahead of time, right, so to.
I think.
So that we can go up to that, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There is a back end.
I'll send you guys a reminder.
Um.
What's that time?
No, no, Matt has to do it.
What?
Matt is a reminder.
Well, we need it on twenty fourth, twenty.
No, I will.
Seventeenth.
The seventeenth, yeah, I do like that.
September.
Except for me, so.
Yes, with the goal of, if it's finished on seventeen of September, it can go onto the board package for the twenty fourth.
Yeah.
I have, uh, I have a, a query about like moving forward with the, just like process, in terms of process,
Yeah.
because of the, um, the search committee. And I, I never know who to include in emails, like, that go out to the whole search committee. Do, do you know what I mean? Like, I, like some, some, I've had like a question for the Koya folks, right? And I don't know if it's actually, uh, compromising on me when I, when, if I were to include every trustee. And if then they wanted to chime in, do they chime in with just the Koya people, or do they chime in with us?
I, I, oh, that's a good question.
That's the stuff we talked about, communications and that.
Can we just send them an email?
I think as, as the.
And then they can respond to you. I mean, you know, I sent out the budget question, I got questions from a lot of people here, but you guys individually responded to me.
Yeah.
So you can send out a thing, but you guys can't have a conversation.
Right.
So you can say, here's my question, please respond to me separately.
So I think. But then what if other people need to, need to know the answer, you know?
I think we need to know from the committee, do you want us to go directly to Koya, or do you want us to funnel our questions through you, so you can aggregate them and go to Koya with the.
I would say it needs to go through Madarima.
Okay, so you guys can, the executive team or the search team can email out all of us if we have questions or we need to respond to something, we respond to Madarima, and then you take that.
Yeah, so, but my question is more like, so when it's, when it's Suzanne, Ted, and me, right? Um, like, if I have a question for Trish and Amber, which came up last week, right?
I mean, that's already three people, so.
Well, but, but Trish and Amber are Koya, they're not part of the committee, like, they're not, they don't belong to us.
Right, but it's already three of us.
So that's what I'm saying, is that I actually left Suzanne and Ted out of the email, because I wasn't, I didn't want to start this discussion, but it felt really uncomfortable, because I would, like, it was a question that pertains to everybody, you know, like.
Copy, it's just, if there was gonna be this, it's, it became like.
It can be like a reply of a situation.
Right.
Like, you can send to Koya, and they can send back to the whole group, but as long as Ted and Suzanne don't start replying all, you're fine.
So then, so then they would respond just to me, like, if they actually had a response?
No, they, they, they.
They can respond to the whole group.
They can respond to the group, but as long as Ted and Suzanne don't also then start replying all to your stuff, and then it becomes a discussion amongst the committee and not just.
No, that's what I'm saying, is that, so.
A response from the vendor, from our, from them, does not, does not create an open meeting violation.
So no, I'm not talking about that, but let's say, I'm saying that if, like Suzanne and Ted, or Suzanne asks something to the committee, and then I have like a pertinent piece of information which changes the game, am I allowed to respond? No, right?
To just, to just Suzanne? Yes.
No, no, to the whole, to the whole group.
Correct.
I can't respond, but I, I can't respond to all, but I can respond to Suzanne.
Yes.
And then Suzanne would let each person know individually, or I would let each person know individually?
Yes, yes.
This is why I said we should aggregate our questions through you, and then.
Yes, open, open meetings is, is a pain, but it is how we keep.
Yes. No, no, I, I, I would rather err on the side of transparency always, I just want to make sure.
It is tricky, yeah, because then something so simple goes not copying, then sometimes another person doesn't know, and then they send out an email that was already sent out.
Yeah, I agree.
Email, you know, things like that. So we're just trying to.
And for the non-members too, so like, I think the first one, I knew you all were meeting because of one of you maybe sharing that detail with me, but like, how should.
They're gonna be publicly posted from now on.
So now they'll just be outside, right?
Yeah, I just sent Madarima email the agenda for tomorrow, and I'll be on the website, and what we'll do is I'll email, kind of like I'll have Maya treat it like a board meeting, committee meeting, and we send it to the committee of the whole.
Okay, yeah.
And just to not fly eye, this is what's going on.
Okay, and we're coming in person at twelve on Friday night.
Yes.
I mean.
In here?
In here.
Yeah, I will, I will.
We've cleared the room.
I, I switch.
Yes, Ted.
Three people.
Yeah.
Switching the link, and somebody, I mean, somebody will have to call or.
Oh, I can do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, I don't know if that means to be minutes.
Okay, uh, technically, minutes can be very, can be like, yeah, we imagine everything, but so.
Okay.
Okay, um, do you have, um, two quick updates, and not discussion, but just updates for closed session um, on personnel matters? Is there a motion to enter closed session?
Still moved.
Is moved and seconded, uh, Suzanne, will you take the role, please?
Oh, yes.